Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the West Melbourne City Council meeting to order. It's December 14th, 2021. If you'd stand for the pledge at a moment of meditation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
We have roll call, City Council, please.
Mayor Rose.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Young.
Here.
Councilmember Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Ditmore.
Here.
Councilmember Bachelmore.
Yeah.
Councilmember Frampton.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Here.
Great. It's good to have everyone here tonight. I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming to this December 14th, 2021 meeting of the West Melbourne City Council. This is our last meeting of this calendar year. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any issue, whether it's on tonight's agenda or any issue that's important to you. Speakers should fill out a speaker card ahead of time and give it to the city clerk. They're located by the front door there. After you've been recognized to speak, please use the microphone and direct all your comments through this chair, and we'll give you three minutes. Thank you. All right, I'll turn this over to Kristi. We have one public hearing tonight, apartment site plan.
Okay, Mayor and Council, give me one minute to load this up. Just for the record, my name is Kristi Fisher. I'm the City Planning Director, and this case is something that you all as City Council had seen before for the rezoning and the small-scale amendment, the map amendment to the comprehensive plan. And per the processes that we have, because of the size and the number of units, the initial site plan doesn't just go to the Planning and Zoning Board like it used to. It also goes to you all. Okay, this is a slide I usually ask for Mr. Richardson's help with.
All right. As you all are aware, this is a quasi-judicial item. Therefore, if you've had any communications regarding this matter outside of a public meeting prior to this hearing, please disclose the identity of the person or persons, group or entity with which you had that communication, the general substance of the communication, and any matters discussed that are material to your decision here tonight. If you've received written communications that you haven't already provided to city staff, please do so, so those can be included in the city's official files. And please disclose anything in the nature of site visits or extraordinary research you may have done that resulted in information that might be material to your decision here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton?
My only disclosure was a Google search map on looking at how the property laid out, so that's it.
Thank you. And I did a drive-by the property to look how dense the forest is in there. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay. All right. The background of this property in the project is the applicant is Jake Wise. He's a civil engineer for the applicant. He's in the audience. And the property as shown on this aerial is in this red polygon. Remember, they had a north piece that was a house, and that was zone commercial. Now it's zoned back to residential. We all did that earlier this year. And the project size of this polygon area is 14.69 acres. You know, remember, the north was like 5.37 acres, south 9.32, a little bit different zoning. But for the purpose of this development, you know, it's fine. We did the development agreement. What they're proposing are five buildings that are four stories for a total of 280 dwelling units. They're going to have the clubhouse and associated amenities. The density equates to 1906 dwelling units, and that is consistent with the approved development agreement. And the Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing and recommended approval to council. Their meeting was on November 29th. This is what I discuss sort of verbally, that, you know, initial site plan and only initial site plan versus final site plans for these projects. They have, obviously, with 208 units, they have more than 50 units. They went through the process where we reviewed it. They did some revisions. They went to Planning and Zoning Board, who gave a recommendation, and now it's in front of you all. So that's that middle box there. And then if it's approved, you know, the initial site plan process is complete, and then final site plan approval is by city staff. It does not come back to City Council. But they have to adhere to any conditions that you all apply. Okay, these are some images that we have them submit, partially to show us building heights. But they have a typical view of their apartment, the four stories, and then the clubhouse. And then to the right is the black and white of their site plan. We labeled a few features, you know, such as a clubhouse and lake and some of the nearby roads. Because of the layout, you know, I didn't really have a way to show the exit through Norfolk Parkway, but we can talk about that on another slide. All right, so what goes into initial site plan review? We review it against the codes, and there's one section, administrative section in the code, that we have to look at for compliance. We look at it for the zoning compliance. We also review it with the comprehensive plan to make sure it's consistent with it. And in this case, there was a development agreement, so we had to make sure they were consistent with their development agreement. All right, so the plan does meet the code requirements for content. Second bullet says of note, you know, two driveways. They're going to have one leading from Promise and Brevard's private driveway. So remember, that's sort of that bridge that leads out to Norfolk Parkway. And that's where they're going to have the ability to go both ways in and out, you know, no problem. That's going to be full access for them. In contrast, the second driveway is only a right-in, right-out on Mitten Road. So that's the county road. Mitten Road's not the city. Norfolk Parkway's the city road, and that one will be right-in, right-out. The next thing talks about the recreation in lieu of payment. So that's probably going to come to you as a recreation agreement, just like we have all the other recreation agreements for multifamily developments. And that, we might bring that to you in January, but that's something the city attorney will work with their attorney about. And then lastly, zoning regulations for R2 or R3 zoning have been met and/or were specifically addressed in the approved development agreement. So that brings me to the development agreement. All the conditions that we had were met, and then the second bullet tells you about some of the specifics that we listed in the development agreement. They stayed to the 200 units. They did limit, you know, connection to Mitten Road. It's not their main entrance. Their main entrance is Norfolk Parkway. And they're not exceeding four stories. And they did submit a plan to show, you know, trees and irrigation on the south side of Norfolk Parkway. In terms of the comprehensive plan, they are consistent with the medium density and urban density residential. And, you know, what we did, if you remember, is they're going to take ownership of more than just, you know, this 14.96 acres. They're going to also have the wetland acreage that's in the front that you see on Norfolk Parkway, and then the property on the south side of Norfolk Parkway that's under the power lines. We do encourage cluster development to preserve additional natural areas. And, you know, what we did look at is that, you know, they have sufficient fire hydrants and fire apparatus, meaning fire trucks and other emergency vehicles can maneuver around the site. And what I showed in this aerial view here is that, you know, looking at the traffic study with our traffic engineer talking it over with the city manager, there's currently, to get into Promise, as you turn from Mitten Road and you're headed eastbound on Norfolk Parkway, there is a little bit of a turn lane to go left into Road C. And we're asking that they extend that turn lane approximately by the length of a car. It might be a little bit more, but 25 feet. And then we're also asking that when you're traveling westbound, so you're in Norfolk Parkway, traveling towards Mitten Road, that there be just a slight taper from Norfolk Parkway onto Road C. We're going to have to be careful with that because the pond is right there, so you don't want to get into the slope of the pond and have cars drive off into that. So it's just going to be a little bit of a taper.
Do you know what the stacking currently is on that, where you're doing the extension?
The stacking, I believe, we say was like four or five cars. I'm looking for Josh. Yeah, I think it's four or five cars now. So they needed to add one more.
Wow, that's...
Okay. All right, environmental and site data for the natural resources, you know, they have to show us that there's no protected species and mitigate for large trees. We'll talk more about the trees here in a second. Their study didn't identify any protected species, and there's no hazardous substances. Existing trees, they indicate that 46 of the 938 trees will be preserved. And then, you know, code says that any trees removed over 10 inches in diameter breast height have to be replaced. Utility extension is a cost borne by the applicant to connect to the city's water and sewer. So they'll, you know, detail a lot of that when they're in the final site plan process with staff. Drainage, they're going to have that central stormwater pond to keep the drainage on-site and not have it go off-site. All right, I think this will be some of the discussions. I created a few slides for this. This was an image that I'd shown of the site plan, where those orange little circles and whatnot on this plan are the existing trees, and they overlaid it with what their layout is going to be. And this area for me was of note because it had a concentration of trees. What they've indicated, and I'm not going to speak for their civil engineer, he can also state this, he can come up to the podium and state this, is that they did try around the clubhouse and the rectangle that represents the pool to try to shift things so that they could maybe save, you know, a few trees. But between the utilities that lead, like the stormwater pond stuff, leads sort of down those two alleys between Buildings Four and Five to the pond, some of the utility lines for water and sewer, you essentially would have an area where any existing trees would be kind of in a low spot, almost like in a bird bath. And the rest of that area would be raised up with fill. So that's what they've told us. And I put the little blue table here just to show you a little bit more of what I had in the staff report. You know, they detailed out for us, you know, how many trees were oaks, how many were pine, just in case you all wanted to know. The distinction really isn't significant in terms of hardwoods and softwoods. A tree is a tree, you know, in our code. But I know sometimes some people have the opinion that pines are less valuable than oaks, so it's just to show you all. And then, you know, with the trees that they're removing, that number in red in the middle column, 892, they've gone through the calculations per the city code. You know, we went back and forth with them several times. And, you know, they are going to be replacing trees. What they have shown was, you know, I copied and pasted from their plan that proposed replacement trees, you know, and they say 379 trees. But then in the next sheet, then they do tell us how many trees they're going to have and what size they are. So that's assuming that those 379 are all two-and-a-half-inch caliper, and in fact, they're going to plant bigger trees. So this is the landscape plan. Those areas with the little i's that are in green, those are the trees that they're saving. And you'll notice sort of in a nice neat row along this east property line, these are the trees that are on Promise property. So right next to their property, and some are actually on this property. All right, so with the table that I have here, you know, what you need to look at is sort of this third column. This is where it tells us how many trees total there's going to be on-site that are going to be new. It's not including the trees that are existing. So 209 trees. I did want to point out that, you know, it looks like, as I said, you know, we're just talking about this 14 acres, but there's also an area off to the south, and I think the mayor talked about driving by and kind of seeing, you know, the wooded area. And that wooded area in front is not going to be cleared. That's a wetland preservation area, so it's got to stay the way it is. It's in a conservation easement. And in case you wanted to see, you know, kind of what that looked like, you've got this bike lane sign. You've got this, you know, rail here that prevents people from, you know, getting into the wetland. And this is sort of an aerial view. This sort of brown area is the wetland, and then you've got sort of the ring of the trees, these little sort of nodules that stick out here. So again, just to kind of give you perspective of what you're going to see from Norfolk Parkway. All right, the Planning and Zoning Board did make, you know, a motion, and they made the motion to recommend to City Council to approve Epic Apartments and their initial site plan with three conditions. All conditions of the development agreement, you know, shall be met. So they have to, it doesn't go away. It still has to be met, whether it's with the final site plan or afterwards. You know, that agreement is still applicable. And the second thing is to pay the fee in lieu of public recreation fee and do the dedication...I'm sorry, to pay the fee in lieu of public recreation dedication. So not give us the land, but pay the fee, and then record the required recreation agreement. The third thing was to add the taper to Norfolk Parkway and extend eastbound turn lane into Road C. And I don't think I had the third one on there, so I apologize for that in your staff report on the cover page. But that was something that carried through from the Planning and Zoning Board. Try to answer any questions. Like I said, the applicant, if you wanted to ask them questions, they're here. If you have sort of technical questions of staff of that initial site plan, I made sure that our reviewing city attorney, city engineers are here too.
I'm going to open up the public hearing now. Does anybody from the public wish to address City Council on this topic? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Thank you. Jake Wise, civil engineer for the project.
Can you pull that mic up, or...
Thank you.
You can hold it if you want.
Is that better? Okay, great. Thank you. Civil engineer for the project applicant. We have our entire site development team here to answer any questions you may have that I can't. Just to briefly go through a few items, you guys have seen this multiple times. You know the project well. We've gone through the developers' agreement. We've gone through the rezoning, land use change. You have title with the properties, which is one of the items we discussed with you. And so we won't, you know, go through the whole thing again. But just very briefly, the entire property involved in this is almost 33 acres. The developed portion of it is less than 15 acres. So we have a half acre on-site of the 15 acres that's being preserved as a wetland and an upland buffer. The rest of the off-site, as staff had showed you, is going to be preserved as well in perpetuity. This is a project that we're doing with Promise and Brevard. It is a little different than some of the other projects you've seen that are multifamily because it is four-story, fully air-conditioned, fully secured, elevators. And part of the reason that Promise, who had a lot of interest in this property from a lot of different parties, chose us, is because of the partnership, because with what we're proposing, any handicap person or special needs person can live on any floor. A lot of the three-story apartment projects that you've seen or even being constructed now are walk-ups without elevators, and they don't have that same opportunity. So we're pretty excited about that. Promise is pretty excited about that, as you guys know. The majority of the site has always been planned for multifamily. In fact, when Promise developed, that was always their goal. We've looked at this time and again over the years with them. They actually master-planned the lift station with a sanitary sewer stubout for multifamily development. We have two large water mains that come through here with the intention of the multifamily development that were put in many, many years ago. So that's always been the case of what was planned here. As staff mentioned, we did get unanimous support from the Planning and Zoning Board. Staff recommends approval. We meet all the criteria and actually exceed most of it as far as the zoning, the land use, developers' agreement, and the site plan requirements for the development. So we spent a long time coming. We're very excited to be able to move forward and appreciate that opportunity. Couple other quick notes. One of the items that was discussed in length with council is the access points. Because of the comments that we received from council and working with staff in a lot of meetings, a lot of detail, we did redesign the entire southern portion of it. We emphasized that main entrance off of the Norfolk Parkway by relocating our clubhouse, our pool, and all those major amenities. We rearranged the site. We got rid of the roundabout that you could see from Mitten Road. We made that just a right-in, right-out driveway, and we've been working very closely with the county on that. We even provided a driveway stubout to the vacant property to the south, trying to be a good neighbor to work with them as well. As far as trees go, we understand that that's a major, major component of any development we do. I've been coming before this council for 20 years. Every project we do, we design everything we can in order to preserve as much trees as we can. And we do that for a couple of reasons we do that, because it's what's best for the natural environment. It's also what's best for the residents of West Melbourne, and what's best for our projects to have that mature feel when the project is first opened. In this particular case, because of all the stormwater regulations we have to meet, and we had a very, very lengthy conversation and meeting with your city engineers, we have to raise the majority of the site five to six feet. I'm six foot one, so almost as tall as me. We have to raise the site. Unfortunately, those are requirements we have to meet. And that's due to the city stormwater regulations, St. John's. We have to meet the floor department transportation requirements because of our adjacency to I-95 and the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District. FDOT alone, we designed the 48 storm events. Melbourne Tillman Water Control District has a very, very severe limitation on the amount of discharge we're allowed to have. And then, as I'm sure you're all aware of, because of the impaired bodies with the Indian River Lagoon and parts of the St. John's River, there's a very, very high requirement for nutrient removal, which is obviously a great thing for this area. Hopefully, those bodies will keep improving. But that's just a big part of what we do. So we spent, I can't even tell you how much time, working with the city, working with our landscape architect, doing everything we could to preserve trees on-site. Even those little green areas that you saw next to the clubhouse, we did stormwater model calculations. We did all kinds of things to see if we could create an area that would have been about five feet deep to try to save a stand of some of the oak trees. And what we found is that the water would have to congregate in there, no matter what we did. There was no way to relieve it, that we could permit through any of the agencies involved that I mentioned earlier. So you would end up with standing water at times on those root systems, and that would eventually kill the trees. So rather than have a situation like that, we are planting at great excess per code the trees. We work very closely with you guys before, like we talked about, even adding irrigation and additional tree plantings along Norfolk Parkway. We've agreed to extend the turn lanes to try to help and alleviate turning movements as best we can off that main entrance. And so what we're also offering to do is to plant larger, more mature trees. So four-inch trees instead of two-and-a-half-inch trees, for example, for the majority of the plantings we're doing, which you saw as part of the staff presentation. So we're doing everything that we can within the limits of being able to still develop the site per the regulations that we have to follow. And so with that being said, since you've seen this so many times, I won't add anything more. Be happy to answer any questions you have. And again, we have our project site team here to back me up, and there's nothing I can't answer.
Thank you. Mr. Frampton, did you have a question for him?
Most of mine are for Kristi, but I do have one question for you. You, I guess you initially asked the county for a cut-through on the median to be able to cross on the Mitten entrance, and it was denied. Is that right?
I don't know all the details of it, but we were looking at the option of trying to help...
Carriage Gate.
Thank you. To try to see if we could partner with Carriage Gate to try to help improve them. We've been working in this area for so long, we knew that was always a concern for them. So we did try to partner with them and work something out, but it wasn't able to work out ultimately. If you need more details, we do have our traffic engineer.
Well, your entrance on Mitten is quite a bit south of where Carriage Gate is. So I guess my really question is that the property on the north already has a cutout onto Mitten, and you guys did away with that cutout.
That's right.
Was that by county request?
Yes, that's by county. Yep, the county told them.
So you couldn't have two...
There's only going to be one.
Right-ins, right-outs.
The county told them there's only going to be one, and my recollection is that this is where the county told them it had to be.
Yes. I give you more detail on that. So that existing driveway cut that the Matthews have for their single-family house doesn't meet any code requirements. It was built a long time ago, so it would have been completely rebuilt. We did originally do some concepts that aligned with Carriage Gate, but ultimately, the county denied that. And they have a requirement in their code that we do shared driveways with adjacent vacant properties, which we've encountered before as well. So...
Hold on, Jake. Let me point that out. Just can everybody see on your screen there where I'm pointing to? This is what he's talking about. If you look at the word Mitten Road and you go to the east, there's like a little nook that like points down, like a driveway apron. Yeah, that's what he's referring to.
So the county code requirement is that we have a shared driveway. So that's why we ultimately moved it south, was working with the county, because we weren't able to work out a resolution with Carriage Gate.
And there was no way to add in a section for that right-in only, to have like a, I don't know what you call it, a loading lane or something to, that would actually go further out so they can get out of traffic quicker?
On Mitten.
Yeah, on Mitten.
Well, are you all done? You're not done with your permitting through the county?
We're not.
So it remains to be seen. Sometimes the county does add additional requirements.
Because it seems to me there's going to be a lot of U-turns being happened there at that light, and it's going to create some problems for us down the road. But, you know, I don't know how we would get around that, so.
What we anticipate, because that was a concern of ours as well, is that the majority of the residents and the day-to-day travel will come in and out Norfolk Parkway. Because unless you're going northbound on Mitten Road, which is an easy right-out, the simplest maneuver is to go to the traffic light Norfolk and Mitten, come onto Norfolk Parkway, and then come into the complex. It's much more difficult to make that U-turn.
If it were me, I'd make the U-turn if I lived on that Mitten roadside, because I wouldn't go all the way down. And I think it's a pipe dream, if that's what you're really thinking is going to happen. So, thank you.
The county will dictate what they want to do. They looked at it, for example, with Wesley Groves. And Wesley Groves was a subdivision that also has to do, you know, U-turn, and that is something that they looked at. But Wesley Groves, and Mr. Wise also designed that, was one where they only had one access. So the county may not be as lenient on this one, and they may require something different than what he's showing.
You're saying we're too lenient here?
No, 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 not us. No, and I don't know that anyone can say the county is either, but...
We won't say that.
Yeah, nor staff. But they dictate, yeah, they dictate what they will require, and that's why specifically, when we have plans like this, if you notice where I put the word Mitten Road, that all is grayed out because that remains to be determined. Yeah, we don't know what's going to happen exactly with the county. We can certainly give them feedback if you'd like.
Rest of my questions are for you, Kristi, unless somebody else has some...
Mr. Bachelmore?
Anybody have anything for the developer?
Yes, we do. Yes. Mr. Bachelmore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, with regards to U-turns, I am absolutely sure that people will U-turn there. I was going to save this for council reports, but there is now a population of people that do a U-turn at Mitten and where the back of the school buses, where the back of the schools have their exits for the school buses. There's now a population of people using that as a U-turn, and it's not a protected U-turn. And so we're now having traffic backing up that's coming up at 45 miles an hour, not expecting there to be stop traffic. So I'm absolutely confident and agree with Councilmember Frampton that there will be people using U-turns. Carrying on with traffic concerns, the westbound Norfolk Parkway with a right turn onto Road C, there's actually a bus shelter there. And what I'm a little bit worried about is having a bus stopped there. And where we are concerned, this is a site that is supposed to have exceptional accessibility due to the residents that you are attracting there. due to the residents that you are attracting there. So, this is going to be, I hope, a well-used bus stop. I'm worried the traffic coming in will conflict with the stopped bus there, particularly if it's taking extra time to load and unload passengers. So, I would like to see some consideration to protecting not only the bus when it is stopped in that location, but also making sure that that traffic flow is not going to potentially conflict with a bus that's pulling out. And then, my last point is, I don't give you any credit for having to raise up six feet because of the impending overdevelopment of this area. There's a reason that you have to do that, because there's so much concrete around here already, water management is a massive concern. So, I'm afraid I don't have much sympathy for you having to raise up the base, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one comment slash question. On the six foot or six feet fill that you've got to bring in, how does, and I hear you saying everything has to be kept on your property, how high is Promise? I mean, how does this, I'm worried about it impacting them.
Yeah, we've already coordinated with that. They also had to elevate pretty dramatically. I don't know the exact numbers, I wasn't the engineer for that. We did both apartment complexes behind Hammock Landings, however. We did Sawgrass Lakes. Those were all elevated about the same in order to make them work as far as, well specifically the other two apartment complexes. It is looked at a site-by-site. It doesn't matter what's developed around us or what isn't developed around us, because we do have a lot of vacant and preserved property around us on this specific site. It's on a site-by-site specific basis. It has to do with the types of soils we have, the elevation of where we discharge to, what the elevations in this specific case is the Melbourne Tillman Cadal, the water table that we're dealing with on the property. So, it's a myriad of factors plus the four different agencies that review it, all have different regulations. So, when you combine all of that, we end up, if you will, with the bad pun of the perfect storm, that we have to elevate the site as much as we have to in order to meet all those regulations, just like we had to for the other two apartment complexes that had the county, had St. John's, had the city, had Melbourne Tillman discharges. This particular one also has to meet DOT, which those two didn't. And with respect to the bus stop, absolutely, we'll look at that closely. We'll make sure we can do everything we can. If we can relocate it maybe and find a safer place for it, we'll work with them on that. Obviously, we want our residents, we want the Promise residents to have the safest possible situation there. So, that'll absolutely be a priority for us and we appreciate very much that kind of input.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and I have a couple of questions about traffic and then trees. First of all, on Norfolk Parkway coming off of Mitten, you said it will stack four cars. That hardly seems enough for the amount of traffic that's going to be generated in this development. So, Christie, is that a made-up number four or is that a traffic engineer?
It's all traffic studies. So, what happens with traffic studies in these types of projects is they submit a traffic study to staff. I get in contact with our traffic consultant who's reviewing it, you know, from the city's perspective. They make comments. That's where the stacking actually came from and the discussion about that was from, you know, the review we had. We tell them, you know, this is what we expect to see. They make the modifications. So, there was some back and forth between their traffic engineer and the city's traffic engineer.
So, we lost?
We didn't lose. They weren't going to do any stacking. We gained. It's always a gain. When we have stacking, when we have a little bit of turn lane movement, it's always, you know, a gain.
It seems like with what, 500 trips plus Promise, four car stacking is not, I mean, logically, I'm not a traffic engineer, but.
We're trying to, remember, I'm not showing all of the roadway going out to Mitten Road. So, what you don't want to do either is have, you know, stacking lane that goes almost all the way up to the signal. So, there's a balance. It's.
Well, if you don't stack, you're in the main lane anyway.
I know, but.
Okay.
You can't stack into turn lanes. I mean, otherwise we'd be, you know, doing a redesign of our turn movements from Norfolk Parkway and the turn lanes there. So, it was looked at, like I said, you know, and you have valid points, but our traffic engineer said, you know, another car length approximately 25 feet should work with what they showed as the modeling for when the peak hours were going to be. And that's really what it's modeled for, is sort of the peak hours. So, if it's modeled for the peak hours and it meets it, that's kind of like saying.
Let me see if I understand. He said it should work, but we don't know if it will work.
Yeah, if you all want to add a comment, all I can do is tell you on the.
Yeah, I would like to add a comment to that, that.
Sure, they do.
Actually, we look at that and make sure that's safe, because again, you and I know that four cars is not a whole lot of cars to fill up that intersection, especially if they don't get tight enough in there.
So, you would like the stacking lane extended? That's your comment?
Yes.
We'll do whatever's feasible. We want it to be as safe, obviously, for our residents as we can. What we do is we look at in great detail at the AM and PM, peak hour for that type of movement, because that's the key. That's when it's going to be the worst. And typically, on the ingress, it's the PM, peak hour, people coming home from work. So, that's really what we concentrate on. And we look at everything from where other traffic signals are, where we think gaps of traffic will be created. There's a whole lot that goes into it and our traffic consultant and the cities were comfortable this would work, but we're happy to look at anything we can do to make it safer.
All right. As far as Road C or whatever that's called, how far is the exit from your development to Norfolk Parkway?
Great question. Let me see if I can scale that for you.
I mean, I can't tell from the drawing, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't have that dimension exactly.
Well, you've got that whole corner property there that it's zone commercial that's before that.
There's also a driveway cut in there too.
400 feet.
400 feet, okay. All right, let's talk about trees. On page 4A-5, it says, "The city staff initially wanted to save more trees, but y'all didn't want to. There's a way of saving the trees if building four and five had one less unit with a slightly smaller footprint." So, if you want to save trees, why wouldn't you consider doing that?
We looked at that in great detail. It's not reducing the building footprint by a little bit or.
I'm sorry, can you speak into, can you speak into?
I'm sorry. It, we looked at that in great detail. So, ultimately, it's the amount of fill. So, by reducing the unit count some or changing building footprints, we looked at rearranging things, we looked at reducing the pool, looked at reducing the clubhouse. We even talked about potentially reducing the amount of parking. Ultimately, because of the fill, we just couldn't make it work because the roots would get inundated with water wherever we tried to preserve trees, except along the perimeter. The perimeter from the driving public is going to look great. We're going to overplant it, as we said, larger, more mature trees. But if we have a five or six foot hole with preserved trees in it, we had no way to get the water out of there after storm events and the trees would just die. And so, we'd end up just replanting them anyway. So, we want to do that up front and we did, like I said, modeling and calculations, did everything we could to try to find a way to make that work.
Trying to wrap my hands around that, because the developments I've lived in for the last 19 years that you designed, I have at least five and a half to six feet worth of fill there and a birdbath for my oak trees and during a hurricane, water collects in there, but in a day and a half, it percolates out.
Yeah, you're in a much sandier area where it does percolate out. Unfortunately, the soils here do not. Same exact situation we faced with the two apartment complexes behind Hammock Landing. We had some wetland areas and the reason they're wet and the reason we have wetlands on this site is because the soils are so different and they just don't percolate out. The water just stands. So, unfortunately, we just couldn't make it work the same way. We looked at underdrains, we looked at alternative discharges, we looked at any way we could to lower the pond, lower the site. We just couldn't meet the criteria that we have to meet in order to do the project.
And also, the area near the pond, you said subject to high water near storms. So, you're not looking for preservation credit on that, but you're making a good faith effort to preserve them. Can you explain a little bit more, why wouldn't we try to leave those trees near that area? Because you said if they die, you want to put in cypress trees, so.
I'm sorry, whereabouts was that?
Is that in the landscape architect's letter?
Yeah, it's in the report.
Okay.
Oh, in the narrative that was written. So, what we're doing is you can see on this slide right here, around the stormwater pond, where we do slope back down to existing grade, we actually completely regraded the whole pond, redid all of our design in order to preserve as many trees as we could around there as well. So, that is the only opportunity we had interior to the site to preserve trees, so we did. So, what we're planting around the stormwater pond are the cypress types of trees that do well with the stormwater elevate, stormwater in the pond rising and lowering at different times during the year.
But couldn't those trees survive there depending on?
They're not existing. We're planting those. They don't have that type of tree existing.
That's not what the report says.
Yeah, that's, if the preserved trees around the lake do not survive a large storm, we recommend that they be replaced.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry, just so that there isn't confusion about whether there's cypress or not, and I believe Ms. Hall wrote the letter. Can I ask her to come to the podium to address what the plantings are going to be and I think that will clarify it?
Hello?
Good evening. I'm Susan Hall, landscape architect. Do you need my address?
Yep.
244 McLeod Street, Merritt Island.
All right.
What we did around the lake was we worked with Jake and his team to create some retaining walls on the, between the front side of the tree and the water's edge, because we're trying to keep the, take the trees that are at grade and preserve those where we can. And that happens very close to the water's edge on the normal water level of the lake. In a storm event, we're not certain that those trees might go underwater and depending on how long they're underwater determines whether or not they will survive or not. So, we're making our best attempt to save these oaks. These oaks range in size from eight inches to 40 inches in diameter.
So, are we going to leave them or?
We're leaving them.
Okay, we're leaving.
However, we're not, we're mitigating them. We're not assuming that they're going to live, but we are leaving them and we're not asking for credit for those.
So, they're not in the count?
They are not in the count.
Not in the count.
They're not in the count. We're just trying to save what we can reasonably and not set ourselves up for failure.
And can you talk a little bit about pine trees? We seem like we just knocked those over with the greatest of ease.
I think I'm one of the few people in Florida that really love pines, from what I hear from my clients. I do want to point out that on this site, there are, you know, the 938 trees and pines on this site. 610 of them do fall below the mitigation threshold. So, we're really dealing with about 200 and, let me see my number, 282 trees that do require replacement. And we have on this site placed pines, a lot of oaks, red maples. In looking at this, we've clustered a number of pines. We have another, in addition to the 209 trees that we're planting, we have 51 trees in the parking lot islands and we have 97 palms, new palms, coming in. So, we have exceeded our minimum requirements. We're happy to do that. We like it that our client allows us to do that. We've exceeded it by about 78 trees and the minimum requirements. And then, in addition to that, we've added the 33 trees on Norfolk.
Do the palms count as trees?
No, those are in addition to that.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. How old is a 10-inch tree, would you say, the circumference of a?
An oak perhaps?
Yeah, perhaps.
As an example. I would say it is probably around 15 years old.
And the pine grows differently?
They're faster.
Yeah.
Probably around 10 or 11 years.
This is a pretty dense forest in there.
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Nothing, no other questions for, yeah.
Christie?
Yeah, not yet. We're still in the public hearing. Does anybody else from the public wish to address city council? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Frampton?
Unfortunately, we didn't make, we didn't get our changes to the Tree Preservation Act that we talked about earlier. You said that's going to happen sometime in February, is that right?
Yeah, when you asked me, that's probably about February, yeah.
So, hopefully, the 78 extra trees that they added would have made up the difference there anyhow.
Right.
So, I do have several questions. On page 7, 4A-7, it talks about the approximate height of the building's 46-foot tall to the roof midpoint. And then, on 4A-10, it says that the maximum height is 40 feet. So, according to that, we're six feet taller than our code allows. So, I know we're pretty close to the, you want to explain?
Yeah, if I can explain, it's not really that they're six feet taller than what the code allows, it's that there's two sections of the code. Either they meet the 40 feet and then they have, you know, and there's a list of the setbacks they have, or if they're going to go over that up until 60 feet, then they need to add, I believe the ratio is, I'd have to look it up, but I believe it's they add three feet for every five feet they go above the 40 feet. And so, that's how, you know, on the cover page, when you look at the setbacks, they're not like nice even numbers. That's why the numbers are a little bit larger. So, they are code compliant, being 46 feet to the midpoint of the Eves. They are code compliant because they did the setbacks correctly.
Is it setbacks from both roads or is it?
It's setbacks from all the property lines.
The whole property or?
Yeah, setbacks from all the property lines. So, I'll go through the setbacks for you.
Well, I'm not going to know whether they comply or not, because I don't know what.
Well, they do. I mean, if.
I believe you.
They required, you know, long, I believe we called, might have been Mitten Road, 42 feet. They have 98 feet, the side interior, which would have been, you know, next to Promise, they're supposed to have 27 feet. They have 98 feet of setback, being that they have two road frontages. The other setback would have been 37 feet, they're 82 feet. And the rear, which is kind of, you know, near I-95 is, instead of being just 37 feet, they're 82 feet. So, they exceed our minimum setbacks.
Okay, maybe just in the staff notes next time.
You're right. Yeah, I absolutely concur. I should have changed that.
It talks about the natural habitats. It says it appears there's some past permitting and conservation easement requirements that have not been met. Is that something that we need to worry about?
No, they do. As a matter of course of development, they need to get a number of permits and that's, they're going to get those permits. They won't be able to build unless they do. So, that's where other agencies are involved.
And my last thing is, it talks about putting up a six-foot-high construction fence around the property during the construction time. And it also talks about advertising on that fence. We just made the schools take down banners from advertising on the fence. Is that something that's going to meet the standards of RCD code?
So, Mr. Richardson, their proposals, like you see on a lot of those fences where they have sort of that screen, like a silt screen that, you know, says what's up and coming. I leave that question up to you.
Yeah, they shouldn't use that for signage.
So, maybe we could get that fixed?
Yeah, and, you know, instead just have a, I agree with putting fabric on the fence. I think that's a good idea, having either the green.
Oh, I agree too, but I know we just made other people take down advertising and I didn't want to do it for one and not the other.
Yeah, and if you could, if you all could make sure in the motion that, you know, we have that, that we say, you know, you can't use advertisement as your, you know, fabric. You have to just use a plain fabric on the fence.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Well, what's the wish of the council? Give you a few minutes to look over it. Deputy Mary Young? Deputy Mary Young?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the initial site plan for two hundred and eighty unit department community known as Epic located west of I-95, east of Minton Road and south of, um, of Norfolk Parkway adjacent to Promise and provide with the following conditions. All conditions of Epic Property, Inc., Development Agreement, recorded on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. An official record book shall be met. Pay the fee in lieu of public re, um, recreation dedication and the, the, um, stipulation that we just said that you asked us to make sure that we make in the motion.
And the turn line. And the turn line.
And the taper.
Yes, extended turn line, yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? I'll second it for discussion. Okay. So what we have here is a development agreement. I guess we call this, that we've been through this many times, a unique piece of property. And, uh, it seems like overall they're trying to please the code and, and make the situation work, but, you know. So, any other comments? Okay. So the motion on the floor, Ms. Young presented. Uh, approve the motion as recommended and add those couple of little notes that you have written down. Okay. All those in favor, so you're gonna saying aye. Aye. Oppose? I think motion passed seven zero. Okay. That was easy. All right. That concludes the public hearings for today. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Good job. She did a good job.
Next we have the public forum where speakers are allowed three minutes. Do we have any speaker cards?
Not.
Item six A, B, C, D is the consent agenda. There's four items on that. Mr. Frampton?
I, I do have a question on the disposal one, so.
We'll pull that one. Which one is that, uh?
Capital assets.
The what?
The capital assets, I think.
Yeah.
Six C.
Disposal of capital assets.
Fixed asset disposal.
All right. Uh, Ms. Young?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with exception to item C.
Thank you. I'll second that. So the consent agenda, motion is passed. Items A, B, and D is in dog. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Frampton, you pulled item C.
Have a question on six C dash six page where it talks about the approval. Um, it talks about, for all other property, less than fifteen thousand threshold property shall be transferred, uh, turned in or disposed of without prior approval of the proper department head where applicable. The operating department shall be responsible to initiate transfer disposition processing. Then it goes on to talk about, I mean, just prior to that, oh, I'm sorry, I read the wrong section. It talks about getting approval of council. The last thing it says, uh, annually to council for acknowledgement and approval.
That's what we're here for. That's this list.
But it's already been disposed of, right?
Right.
So getting our approval really doesn't matter, correct?
Well.
It just seems to have that in the policy just seems silly. I mean, let us know what was thrown away and why do we need to approve it?
All right, well, I will.
I'm just, that, that's just, seems silly to me, that's all.
I have talked to the auditors for a couple of years about this. For most of the larger items, you already approved the disposal.
Yeah, I, yeah, 'cause we do that at the time.
And there's a tractor.
At the time of replacement, we, we approve that.
This is more a ministerial, so I don't have to go, well, they did it here and they did it here. So this is a list that, no, um, if, if there's an old server and Mr. Bradford needs to like throw it in the garbage because it's from two thousand and thirteen, we're not gonna, we don't leave this stuff piled up and that was.
I agree that it gets thrown away. I'm just saying that.
Right.
I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't know why I'm approving something that already happened. I would rather just tell me what happened and we'll move on.
Well, we're telling you what happened. And there are two items on here, just in case there are questions that I thought afterwards I would explain. There is a fifty-four thousand dollar, um, item for the Ellis Road Water Main and it was a timing issue. It was some FDOT work that they requested in addition to that. We capitalized the project in FY-20. And in FY-20, a lot of us were home and back and forth. And then we got the money in FY-21 and we asked Keith, you know, what, what is this? Well, so we had to pull that money back out of the project that we capitalized the year before.
But it's my understanding that we're, this, we're approving this new policy, correct?
The, the policy, the policy was put in place October first last year. So what we've told the auditors that we will do, instead of piecemealing it through the minutes, because there are some things on here that are just scrapped. So if we buy new police cars, you're involved in what's going.
But I, I thought we made changes in this policy based on the auditor's request.
Yes.
And that's what we were doing here, reviewing this policy and reapproving the policy. Is that not correct?
No. You're just looking at the disposals for FY-21.
Okay. Well, then the wording change, I, I, I believe we should make a wording change, but you can take that as you want. Um, the trailer, the trailer that was, um, disposed of, scrapped, um, was that the recreation trailer that they had? Uh, it's probably two, four, six, eight, ten, eleven items down?
Janmar.
It says a trailer red with drop gate on your list.
Right below that one.
Ninety-six.
Was that the trailer from the recreation department? Mr. Morgan?
I, I, I don't actually know, um.
Okay, 'cause I know we disposed of one from the recreation department, but it was actually, um, I think, uh, Mark got it back in, in Public Works and we're able to fix it and utilize it over there, correct? But.
This is a, yeah, this trailer was from nineteen ninety-six and it was a fourteen-hundred-dollar trailer. So I, I doubt if it was anything that Mark could use. I could be wrong. I'm not a.
You recall? Okay. Thank you.
And Margie, I have one. I don't know if it's just the, the heading. It says motorcycle emergency lights and we sold them for twelve thousand dollars.
I, I think that that's just a line item out of fixed assets. It came in, it's, it's the entire, that's the whole motorcycle. I was going to bring your attention to the next line.
Yeah, I haven't got that far.
Two thousand and eighteen Ford interceptor.
Yeah.
Um, that shows that we got no money. This is, it's a timing issue.
Yeah.
We got the money from insurance in FY-20 and we like to tie this to the general ledger. So in, before year end of twenty, we received thirteen thousand, three hundred and twelve. And then we disposed of this like at the beginning of twenty-one. So it's just a, it's a timing issue, but we did get.
Even though you have nineteen thousand in there?
Right. We, we tied, we, we got zero proceeds from disposal in FY-21 because it came in FY-20. So it's not on this schedule. Thirteen thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars.
All right. Anything else? Okay. You gonna like to make a motion to pass that then?
Sure, I'll make a motion to pass it as written.
Okay. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, so you're gonna saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. All right. That concludes the consent agenda. Now we have a number of action items. Action on item seven A, annual five-year capital improvement plan update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have a, uh, short PowerPoint highlighting the annual update of our five-year capital improvement plan. So, um, if we can just click when, when we're ready for the next slide. I don't have the advanced, so go ahead and click to the next slide, please. So we have a multi-year plan for proposed future capital improvements, uh, where the first year represents projects that you have already approved in the currently adopted budget, but years two through five are planned, but not yet budgeted improvements. Uh, we look at the planned, uh, projects in years two through five as being reasonably cost feasible. Um, so that considers both our own financial resources, uh, together with reasonably possible future grant opportunities. So, uh, uh, it's, uh, call it a stretch, but it's not, uh, infeasible that we could, uh, construct this much in the way of, uh, capital improvements. Next slide. So, uh, we divide, uh, this five-year, uh, plan into five categories. Uh, the first category is parks and recreation. Second category is potable water. Uh, third category is a sanitary sewer. Uh, fourth category is stormwater. And the fifth category is roadway improvements, transportation. Next slide. So this is a spreadsheet of what, uh, the five-year plan, uh, looks like. You've got the tables attached to the, to the proposed ordinance, but that you can see that, uh, in the current year budget, you've approved eighteen point, uh, three, four million, um, in current year, uh, capital projects in those five categories. Uh, next year, we're projecting, uh, sixteen point two million. Uh, the following year, the water plant really starts to ramp up and we get to, uh, close to twenty-five million, uh, more than half, uh, in the water. Again, uh, sort of, uh, tailing down the water plant, uh, we're at eighteen and a half million in twenty-four, twenty-five, and then, uh, back to a seven-point four million dollar, uh, level in twenty-five, twenty-six, which is the hardest year to sort of forecast future grant opportunities. The nearer term gets a little easier, some of which we have in hand that are going to take over a couple of budget years to construct. But it gets harder to, uh, project those out years, so those are really using our own local resources. Next slide. So just in terms of the most significant projects in each category, uh, the most significant park project is, uh, a, uh, master plan for the property, uh, west of West Melbourne Community Park and the, uh, potential to acquire property west of West Melbourne Community Park for future, uh, park expansion opportunities.
I always wondered why we keep putting that nine hundred thousand in there when really we've had no real interest in that property, nor do the people wanna sell their property.
The third parcel, uh, from the park was on the market for a very long time. It, it came off. Uh, we did talk to the broker at that time. Um, the, uh, parents, um, that owned the property in the middle with a, a very nice home on it, uh, thought about our proposal, but weren't quite ready to, uh, sell their property and, you know, downsize. And then the property that would be most valuable to us, uh, the one immediately adjacent to the park is, had been gifted already to the son and daughter-in-law. It's vacant. And so, you know, we, we had described our, uh, interest in all three, but our, our most significant interest is the one closest to the park. Um, so I'm, I'm still sort of holding out hope that the parents will get to the point where they do wanna downsize and they may talk to us about, um, selling, uh, what could be used as future park expansion.
Have you made any movement at all on the fifty thousand expenditure for the master plan?
No, that's not in the current budget. That's proposed in next year's budget.
Okay. Mr. Dittmar?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Morgan, when, when's the last contact you had with the Realtor on this property?
Probably been eighteen months, two years.
I rest my case.
I did, uh, have contact with someone.
Is your mic on?
I believe it is. It's not working. Hello? Better? Okay. I did have contact with someone here, uh, the last couple of weeks that, uh, it's my understanding they were in a process of making an offer for that property. So.
Well, then that would be unavailable if, if it develops.
You might wanna check into it to see if that's, uh, I didn't follow up with that and I didn't really have much of a discussion. I knew what they were talking about, but I, you know, you might wanna follow up and see if it's still gonna be.
If it becomes unavailable to us, then it's, uh, not an opportunity. Then the only other property to the west could be off of a fell instead of off of Flanagan.
Maybe we should just re-up our interest in it and that way they know we're still interested and, and if our offers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact the, if, if they're represented by, uh, by a Realtor, I'll contact the Realtor. If they're not represented, they can contact the property owners directly.
Mr. Frampton, do you have a question?
I was gonna ask at the end of his presentation, but it has to do with transportation, so.
Okay, well, well, then we have the next slide. So again, what are the most significant water projects? Um, so as you know, we've acquired, uh, three point three-nine acres, uh, on Park Hill. Um, we're in the process, the council approved, uh, a rough grading of that property and that work is, is well underway now. Uh, there's another opportunity for another parcel immediately north of there, behind some of the homes on the east side of the road, uh, that, uh, Tim Rhodey had contacted that property owner to see if they're interested and they are interested, just not, uh, immediately. So we have that in a, a future year as a possibility of expanding our water plant in Public Works, uh, there. A significant amount of water distribution system improvements to prepare us for the opening of the new water plant, uh, the construction of, uh, pipes, uh, with raw water from raw water supply wells to the new plant, and then of course, the construction of the plant itself. Those are, are all most significant projects. And again, from a previous slide, you see, you know, the largest share of our five-year plan, uh, is in, uh, is in developing our, our water plant and associated, uh, uh, conveyance of raw water and, and, and water, finished water distribution. Next slide. In terms of the most significant sanitary sewer projects, uh, project that is, uh, winding down and the design should be, design should be completed in March or April, is a major process improvement at the wastewater treatment plant. That is, is a significant share, uh, grant-funded. And then, uh, again, uh, doing very well with, uh, grant funding for additional septic-to-sewer conversions for neighborhoods off of Sheridan Road. So that'll be a major undertaking, uh, where we have, uh, grants, uh, announced, not yet grant agreements in hand, but, uh, grants announced that will allow us to move forward with those, uh, septic-to-sewer conversions. Next slide. The most significant stormwater projects, uh, we have a hundred percent grant-funded project that reduces flood risk in the Melbourne Estates neighborhood. Um, as you know, we're finishing up, uh, a project, uh, at the, uh, sanitary sewer wastewater treatment plant, um, that is a flood risk reduction project that will be completed here in the next couple of months. Uh, one project that's new to the list is one that we have, uh, requested a legislative line item appropriation, uh, to do a really good, uh, project in Westbrook. Uh, this would, uh, make a permanent, uh, gravity diversion of the most northerly Westbrook, uh, retention pond. And instead of having that flow through Westbrook through their series of interconnected ponds, south to Melbourne Tillman Canal Seventy, it would be intercepted and taken north, uh, to a different Melbourne Tillman Canal. And, uh, in the past, when large storm events have been forecast, the homeowner association has, uh, leased pumps to, to do that same action, uh, via a pump. Uh, but that's very expensive and, and they, you run the risk of not having it work, running out of fuel right when you need it. Uh, this would be a, uh, permanent gravity, uh, solution that would reduce. that would reduce flood risk throughout Westbrook. And so we're asking for $460,000 from the legislature for that of a $700 and something thousand dollar project, a very good project. And then...
Which legislator is promoting this bill?
We have Representative Fine on the House side, and we have Senator Mayfield on the Senate side. So we have both representatives supporting that. So we're hopeful that that might make it through the legislative process and the governor through the line item veto process. So we're hopeful.
Also, I have a question on that also. The house that we purchased, that we knocked down, is that in Melbourne Estates?
Yes, that will be part of that design, yes, sir. And then there had been a couple of representatives from Hollywood Estates that came into the council a couple of times over the years. And they're concerned about nuisance water in the streets. And so included in here, we think that that could be the possibility for a multi-year effort to start that reconstruction of their drainage system through application of community block grant funds, small-city neighborhood renewal grants. And so we've been successful every few years at securing those for some of our neighborhoods with infrastructure deficiencies. And it's the only way we could think of. I know when the council was talking with those homeowners, you know, what would it take? And we looked at this as a more than $2 million activity. And so we would have to bite it in phases and see if we could get grants. But we hadn't forgotten what those homeowners had requested. And so in a future year, once we conclude our Melbourne Estates project, if we go a couple of years without getting a CDBG grant, then you can score more points for not having had one recently. And we think that that neighborhood would qualify for that opportunity. So that's a significant new opportunity for us in the plan.
Mr. Morgan, I didn't know that they would be giving money for nuisance water as opposed to real water that floods the house.
Yeah, the CDBG requirements are to benefit low- and moderate-income neighborhoods. They don't specify a standard of reducing flood risk. Certainly, when we submitted for Melbourne Estates, we showed that it reduced flood risk, and that's why we got some CDBG disaster recovery, special CDBG money after a hurricane that flooded the neighborhood. So it wouldn't score as well, but it may score well because of the income levels of the neighborhood. That's a high-scoring component of those grants.
Didn't you also determine that there's kind of a moderate risk of that system failing there anyhow eventually, the way that was set up?
Yeah, we've done some, I'll call it major maintenance, at the south end of the sort of the open drainage grates and those concrete boxes. But, you know, the pipes that are under the streets are old, and it just...
Kind of undersized, too.
Yeah, it was a poor design to start with. So, you know, to really do it right, that's why it's a very expensive proposition, and we would really need grant funds to proceed with something like that.
I think it's a good project to keep on the books and look after.
Thank you. All right, next slide. In terms of road improvement projects, the most significant ones are the extension of Heritage Oaks and Doherty, a new traffic signal at Hollywood and Imagine, an additional eastbound lane on Norfolk Parkway approaching Minton, the extension of FELL Road East to Dairy. And then a new project proposed for next year as a result of the council direction recently is improvements at Norfolk Parkway and Shallow Creek. And I think Councilmember Frampton, you had questions regarding the road projects?
Yeah, the question was on that. Is that $600,000 for the traffic light that we council kind of said that they supported putting at that location? Is that what that is for, or...?
Yes, it would be the intersection improvement so that we could no longer have to rely on a public service aid out there in the morning and afternoon, so.
So is it more than just a traffic light? Or is it...? Because I know council discussed the traffic light thing that happened.
Yeah, that's what a traffic light would cost.
Okay. Because the other one in Hollywood was $450,000 as opposed to $600,000? So I was confused.
Yeah, it's... Here, we're asking the traffic engineer to look at this both in the near term, calling the near term, you know, minimum five, probably 10 years, where the current conditions of a single lane in each direction on Norfolk Parkway remains. But then at some point, the plat ranch develops, and Norfolk Parkway is extended to the St. John's Heritage Parkway. And in our comprehensive plan, in the Melbourne Comprehensive Plan, it shows Norfolk Parkway as four lanes. And so we've asked the traffic engineer to look at the design such that you wouldn't have to take anything out at such time in the future as it becomes four-lane. So that's why it could be a little more expensive at the front end, but then it saves you costs downstream by not having to...
Move it stuff around, correct?
You know, move a mast arm, extend a mast arm, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, you also had, I believe you're supposed to bring something back, with either December or January, the intersection of Henry and Daughery, because we're getting more and more accidents there, especially when that road opens up. So I don't know where we are with that.
Yeah, the council directed that once Henry and Doherty opens, to look at that. And with my recollection is the council's specific direction, within six months of opening, look at how that stop-controlled intersection functions to see if it would need to be improved. So the council was very specific in its direction in that regard, which we would do.
But as you know, we're getting more and more accidents there presently, and it's not a four-way intersection yet, so.
But in the extended area, you would actually stop Henry, right? So you'd stop what's currently stopped, southbound Doherty. You would stop northbound Doherty. Now you would stop east and westbound Henry. And so it would end up being a four-way stop at the end of the project, which we will see how that works. But it should not have traffic accidents at a sort of traditional four-way stop.
Are you going to leave it four-way or have five-way? Or is it currently designed? Five movements there.
Yes, the left and through movement for the eastbound Henry would remain, and those are stopped simultaneously. It's sort of like we have at Doherty and Imagine way. You stop both simultaneously. Next slide. So because this is a first reading, the first recommendation asked is to ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only, to consider any public comments. And after any public comments, to approve the first reading and set a public hearing and second reading for your next meeting on January 18th.
Mr. Bentley?
I was just going to make a motion if you let him read that. Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 202126, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the annual update to the capital improvements element of the Comprehensive Plan consistent with Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for the repeal of ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability and interpretation, and providing an effective date.
Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? Saying none, I'll close that. Mr. Bentley?
And make a motion. We approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-26 and set a public hearing and second reading date for January 18, 2022.
Mr. Frampton?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Bentley?
No.
Okay. We have a motion second. All those in favor who are saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries seven-zero. Item 7B, five-year extension of emergency waters agreement with the City of Palm Bay, Florida.
Yes, Mayor members of the council. By way of background, back in 2009, when the Palm Bay road widening project was underway, Palm Bay and West Melbourne worked together to extend a water line under Palm Bay Road that would support a future emergency water interconnection between the two water distribution systems. And in 2011, Palm Bay formalized an agreement with Melbourne. And in 2013, West Melbourne and Melbourne entered into a new water supply agreement that provided the ability for West Melbourne to enter into an emergency water agreement with Palm Bay. And that was worked out in the summer of 2013. And then in October of 2013, the Palm Bay City Council and West Melbourne City Council approved the current emergency water supply agreement between the two cities. The agreement that is proposed to extend for five years to December 31, 2026 is identical to the current agreement. And we hope that it never has to be used. But in the past eight years, West Melbourne utilized this twice when Melbourne had an emergency disruption, and we needed to have emergency water supplied from the City of Palm Bay. And so it has proven valuable in the past, and it's a good insurance policy. And so it's my recommendation that the council approve the extension of the agreement with the City of Palm Bay.
Mr. Frampton?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the emergency water supply agreement with Palm Bay as written.
Mr. Bentley?
I'll second with a comment question.
Yes, go ahead.
You said identical. Does that mean the price per thousand gallons was exactly the same? They didn't raise it for the next five years?
Yes.
Wow, thank you.
The price goes two ways if they take our water at the same price, correct?
Correct.
All right, we're just the middleman there. Okay. We have a motion in second. All those in favor who are saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries seven-zero. Item C, final plat for the dunes at Heritage Oaks. And Mr. Christie, load her PowerPoint up there.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Give me just a minute. Okay. This is for a project that's called the dunes at Heritage Lakes. Final plat is another way of saying it's the final approval of their subdivision layout. And so they've already gone through what's known as the preliminary plat. That's where they initially present to us, you know, how they want to lay it out. And then by final plat, they're supposed to, you know, unless there's some conditions that have changed, they're supposed to have the same layout. So the dunes at Heritage Lakes, the applicant is Mr. Scott Globus. He's in the audience. He represents D.R. Horton. This property is located west of I-95, east of Heritage Lakes, or St. John's Heritage Parkway, near the Ellis Road interchange. And in the aerial, I have the polygon in yellow with a word site on it. That's where the property is. So as you get off of I-95, there's that curve in the road. And this isn't the first property. You see, it's another property with three big lakes on it. The property size is 73.66 acres. What the applicant has requested by way of layout of the subdivision is 146 single-family lots and 10 tracks. They have a stormwater track, so the three lakes become one, a road tract, landscape, open space, utilities, tracks, and then mail kiosk, landscape access tracks. All subdivision plats are a two-part process. We went to the planning and zoning board, so we got the recommendation from planning and zoning board, who conducted that meeting on November 29. They recommended approval to city council with conditions, and then you all as a governing body. Okay, this is another view. And remember, north is sort of pointing up to the right side. You've got, you know, US 192 sort of at the bottom on the left, the St. John's Heritage Parkway coming from that. This property obviously has adjacency to I-95. And it would be sort of at the tail end of Columbia Lane, except Columbia Lane, as a right-of-way, doesn't go quite as far up. But we'll talk about what they're going to do. And then there's an FDOT pond that's north of this, but part of the next plat we're going to look at. So in June 15, 2021, that's when we looked at the preliminary plat. And that's when, you know, they had two options at that point. Either they could, you know, go finish the construction drawings and go build all the improvements, all the infrastructure improvements, so that the subdivision could be built and populated with houses, et cetera. Or they have the option, you know, per our code, to post performance bonds. So that's the latter option is what they're choosing. That's why I have that arrow next to it. I also listed the preliminary plat conditions. You know, they met all six of them, and there's a few conditions. So actually, it's five. There's three conditions that still remain. We'll talk about those in a minute. So the audience sees the same thing that was in the staff report. You know, this is the layout that they have, and it is similar to what they had with the preliminary plat. Remember, one of the conditions, when I have the text on the left-hand side of the screen that says 146 lots, you know, it was always a private ungated subdivision. One of the things in the preliminary plat we had them add was access to Columbia as a sort of emergency access. And that's that sort of candy stripe yellow area. And they did provide that in a suitable dimension so that, you know, you could have two-way traffic in and out of there. And it is going to be stabilized. So these aren't construction drawings. Remember, these don't tell you what the base is going to be in the sub-basin. All that just shows you where it's going to be. So we talked about the three existing ponds are going to be one large pond, and that's called Tract SW1. All right, for Tract information, these are the ones that are not part of the 146 lots. So there's going to be 146 residential lots. And then to support that, you know, you've got the roadway utilities. You have a few landscape tracks, some areas that could be used for mail kiosks. That usually gets designed, you know, with the post office and with the applicant responding to the post office as to location. Stormwater. And that acreage of the 48 acres for the tracks does not include the acreage of the 46 lots, 146 lots, excuse me. Utilities, they are going to have to extend water and sewer lines. So some of this stuff here, it doesn't show up on the plat. It shows up on the construction drawings. So if I could just back up a minute and let you all know that with each subdivision, there's a set of very technical engineered drawings to show how they're going to bring in the water line, what's it going to look like, sewer, you know, all the major infrastructure. And so that gets reviewed by the city department. So our engineer, our water and sewer department, planning has a part in it. So when I talk about utilities, you know, it's not going to be shown on the plat. But wanted to assure you all that they do know and they are planning to extend water and sewer lines. And that will be in their performance bond. They're going to have to include that cost. So it's not just on-site that the water and sewer is right next to them. They've got to bring it along Columbia Lane.
Question on the currency of schools. How do you come up with 76 students that...?
I didn't. That's the school board. So they have student generation rates, you know, per unit. And if you would like, I can share, you know, that letter that they give us. It has that little formula and tells us what it is.
Only a half a student per house.
I don't have any input in how the school board does that. I mean...
I thought we had a formula pretty much like...
We don't, they do. And we agreed to it in the interlocal agreement that we approved several years ago.
It seems like a lot lower number than we're used to.
They have changed it over time. You're right. Recreation, they're not going to have any land set aside for recreation, so they'll have to pay the payment in lieu of... Far County, for now, would be the service provider for fire, and law enforcement is our city. All right, in terms of transportation, they, of course, just like we did with Epic Apartments, they submitted traffic study. And then, you know, when they were going through the preliminary plat and some of the con... And then, you know, there was, when they were going through the preliminary plat and some of the construction drawings, it didn't really seem like we had a finite answer from the county as to whether they were going to allow the signal. But the county did finally answer us, like a few days before the November 29th PNC meeting, that they were going to say that the signal was warranted at build-out. So, you know, the details as to the timing of when that gets built is really between the county and us because St. John's Heritage Parkway is a county road. It's, it doesn't include us. And they say that built-out of both subdivisions, this subdivision and then the one they're calling St. John's Heritage Lakes North, would be by the year 2024. All right, so we look at other parts of the code, and then we also have the second checkmark, the second bullet down indicates to you all that part of the plat review also involves a land surveyor looking at all the monumentation and whatnot they have for the plat. So that, that part's done. Third bullet about performance bond, they still have to post these performance bonds before. If you all tonight say that the plats are okay, you know, and you approve it, then what happens next is it's a type of sheet called Mylar. And the mayor's used to seeing it because he signs it. But it's almost kind of like something thicker than wax paper that's signed with special pens and whatnot. That gets recorded. So that's what I talk about with the final plat, Mylar, is that, that particular document. The properties cannot be sold until a final plat is approved and recorded. But, you know, if Mr. Richardson wants to point out something to you, I'll let him, you know, talk to you about that because that's really more of the legal portions. All right, for the city reviews, our engineer who's in the audience, you know, looked at for the construction drawings. Again, that's not part of this plat, the stormwater management. And they have to, you know, meet or exceed the design standards. They looked at also the water and sewer lines. I have some red notes on this aerial talking about extension of water and sewer coming up from Columbia. And then the city attorney always reviews the legal documents. You know, he's reviewed some of them. If there's some changes that they make for some reason, he would look at those again. All right, outside agencies, as you know, most developments do not occur in a vacuum. So they have to, you know, coordinate with FDOT about not impacting their drainage. They've indicated they have a St. John's permit. We talked about Far County and the roadway, FDP, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and then even the city of Melbourne for water concurrence. So in conclusion, the recommendation on November 29th from the planning and zoning board was to approve the final plat for the Dunes at Heritage Lakes with the following conditions. The first one, to coordinate with the city and floodplain agencies to ensure that building floor elevations, drainage, and other issues are addressed. So that means when they're going through with the building permits for each individual lot, you know, to prove to Tom Forbes, who is our building official, but he's also a floodplain administrator, that they meet the minimum flood elevation they're supposed to do. So that's what we mean in number one. Number two, to post an infrastructure and sidewalk performance bond or bonds, depending on how they want to do it. And again, that's something that assures that the subdivision's not going to just be half-built, that even though you all may approve it tonight, that they actually are going to put in all the infrastructure to sustain it. And the third one is to pay the recreation fee prior to recordation of the Mylar. The outside agency premise is sort of an advisory statement. And I didn't include in the one, two, and three, a statement that we had as a condition in front of PNC. And that's that last sort of bullet that says plat was revised to address this condition. So PNC said, you've got to make sure that the final plat has the road names that E-911 has approved. And that's what they did. They changed one of the roads between blocks B and C to Bar Street instead of it being called Dunes Avenue. And I'll try to answer any questions you might have. And the applicant is here.
Mr. Francis?
Christie, I absolutely hate the dead ends in this plan. It forces, forces services to either back down the road like garbage services or, or pull in forward and then back out and causes things. Is there any way to require a cul-de-sac turnaround at the end of these dead ends? Or is that, I'm not so worried about the want, the T at the, at the southeast side, but that, the longer stretch on the.
At the north end of McFarland Drive.
It just seems like there's nowhere to turn around. And it's just the, you know, having a garbage truck back down your road is, is not the best thing to do.
Yeah, I understand. And to answer your question, there are provisions within the county's fire code about, you know, how far their apparatus can go without having a T turnaround. So that's why McFarland Drive ends up doing that T at the south end, like you said. And that had to do with a distance measure. So if you can see blocks G and H, and that little stretch of McFarland Drive is a little bit longer than where you were pointing to, which is up at the north end near block E, near the, you know, and so there's a little bit less distance before you get to a massive circle. So again, that's, that's all technical stuff that the fire department kind of works out. And our, Tom Forbes, as a fire marshal, he, he opines on that and makes changes.
Well, and like I said, more so, you're going to have issues with trash, trash collection because that happens twice a week, and that's going to happen all the time. Hopefully, we never have a fire truck down there. But we're going to have a garbage truck down there twice a week.
Yeah.
And they're going to be backing out of that road, and it's, and it's going to be dangerous for the residents, and.
It's not an optimal design. I agree with you. Staff's job is to tell you if they meet minimum criteria, and they do.
So like I asked, is there any way we could request this?
Certainly ask if they'd like to consider that, but they.
Because they chose not to make this a through road to the, to the section. So maybe the engineer.
Yeah, why don't we have the engineer come up, the project engineer?
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Ken Ladua with BSE Consultants. We are the applicant's engineer. Mr. Globbitts is always here, are also here. With regard to the, yeah, the dead end on, on track A, the, the only way to, to add a turnaround there, either a cul-de-sac or a T turnaround, would be to lose the lot.
That works.
Well, you have space to the, a little bit of space to the east, right?
There is a, well, actually, the north there, are you saying? North being to the right?
I mean, throw in a cul-de-sac and make it easy for everybody. It's safer for your, your purchasers, the homeowners, you know. I come from a community here, and, and I just recently saw a trash truck having to back down a dead-end road. And it, I cringed when I saw it. And it just, you know, it just seems like the right thing to do for the people that are going to be purchasing your homes.
Can I ask a question? So would it be possible to go into track OS-3 with that cul-de-sac? Or are the terms of those easements prohibitive, that they won't allow any pavement in those easements?
I'm skeptical that OS-3 would allow that.
Okay. Yeah, and that has to do with those utility lines. That's why I'm asking that. So the only option they have is part of that access. That's what that little finger is on the north side of block E, above lot 25, to get into the stormwater track.
Maybe we can make lot 20 and 19 a little smaller and make some room.
I think it's a good idea to do that.
It's just going to be dangerous for.
It's not good planning. I mean, I know our planning director wouldn't draw something like this for ideal planning, would you?
She already said it wasn't a good concept.
Yeah, but again, you know, we look at it from the code lens. So, yeah, it would be better to have. I mean, I agree, it would be better to have a little bit of a turnaround there.
I see it as a safety issue and then just, I wouldn't want my kids down there, that's for sure. I think the other question here is if we are adjusting lots there, is that something that can be approved conditionally? Is that?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
Yeah, I think as long as the direction is clear enough, then they could go ahead with the, with an approval, recognizing that a change is going to occur. But it would have to be a pretty clear direction from council and agreement from applicant that it'll, that we can make sure the, the intention is accomplished. Otherwise, it would require a return to council.
Cul-de-sac.
Turnaround, appropriate turnaround area to, whatever that may be. I don't know what, how big trash trucks are, you know. I don't have that.
Mr. Richardson, do you want to help us at the end with the condition?
I can try. It'll depend on what the applicant's willing to submit to. But this is within the purview of the, of the review typically of initial plat and not final, but.
Do you have a suggestion, sir, on what, what we could do?
Again, I think you would end up losing, losing a lot there. I, I think we would want to try to, try not to lose more than one.
Now, you have access, it looks like you have access between 21 and 22 for lake access. Is that what that is, or is that a drainage easement?
Twenty, of which block?
Between 21 and 22, it looks like there's either access or drainage.
Block E, okay.
That's a drainage easement. Yeah, yeah.
So that means it's on people's property. It's not a.
No, no, I get it. But sometimes you have to have access to the lake.
They do, and it's just above that lot 25. See that little finger? So I look on the north side of lot 25, block E.
Yeah, I see it.
That's the little finger that has access, and that is a code requirement.
So reducing the size of 19 or 20 to give you a little extra space at the end for a cul-de-sac, is it possible?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Scott Globbitts with BSE, business address in South Harbor, Seattle.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, we've, we actually have in the construction plans a T turnaround that meets code. I mean, we meet code with this plat. You're asking for something additional, and we're not going to tell you no. But if you allow us to relax some of the absurd requirements on lot 19 and 20, where there's a cord distance that makes those actually unusually large and don't fit the character of the neighborhood, there's more than enough room to pull that line over and put in a, either a bigger T turnaround than the one we have or a cul-de-sac.
It doesn't look like there's any T turnaround right there.
That's because these aren't the construction plans. This is just.
So what he's saying is that you're, you're looking at the tract, but the actual sort of cul-de-sac that they have, or you said it was a T, Mr. Globbitts, that that shows up on the construction drawings?
I'm perfectly fine if there's a spot at the end of that road to turn around. I'm perfectly fine with that.
We, we certainly can do that because we've got lake access, so we can pull them in, back them up, and turn them around. We can definitely do that.
And just for clarification, for the record, that, that modification, their construction drawings for the subdivision are approved because it met code. That would be just a minor modification, just so that you're aware of that.
I would ask for your approval of this final plat, letting staff see this change. We get it done, and then it can come to the mayor for signature that we don't have to go back for board.
I'm not clear exactly what the change is. Can you explain that?
Well, are we looking at modifying track A in its shape? Or is that still going to be the same, and we're really just going to modify?
It's hard to read this online.
To the, and I think that's why Mr. Richardson asked to have it be carefully worded.
We could either modify track A, or we could add an easement down there that's coincident with the stormwater easement and make it work that way. So I think between Mr. Richardson and, and Christie here, that we can certainly make those adjustments. We'll make the adjustment to the construction plan also, even though the plans are approved, because we don't want something constructed incorrectly. So, I mean, the two got to go hand in hand, so that's, that's easy for us to do. And that's, in all honesty, that's a tomorrow morning change, and it's done.
So I'm not clear again what the, are we talking about McFarland on the bottom left?
No, we're talking at block E, not at block I. So, yeah.
You have one of those red pins where you can.
I don't have a red pen.
Yeah.
Near lot 25, Mr.?
Yeah, near lot, bottom right.
So look at the squiggly line on your screen of this plat. And if you keep following that squiggly line out towards I-95, we're talking about that, that end there of McFarland. So not where we have the yellow candy striped area, but at the north end.
What about that side? Isn't that to pull in and back out too?
For which side? The south side with McFarland?
Left side. I don't know which.
No, that, that, they actually do have enough area to do a turnaround.
Yeah, they're just a simple.
On McFarland at the south end.
I'm guessing and just do a.
On the south side, those are large T turnarounds, plus access to the emergency, access to Columbia Lane that staff asked for.
Yeah, that's going to be a stabilized surface. So they have plenty of room to turn around, both on the stabilized surface and on that portion of McFarland.
Yeah, I guess I don't see it, but that's.
You don't see it? I could try to.
Approach the screen and put my finger on it?
We can't see it.
I can't see that angle.
We can't see that.
Sure.
Christie, if you, if you go to the bottom left-hand corner of a PowerPoint slide, you'll see that there's some faint symbols that come up. The third symbol from the left actually allows you to use a laser pointer, a virtual laser pointer on the, on the screen.
Let IT do that.
All right.
Christie?
I'm sorry. I had to pay attention to what's going on there.
There is, that's, right, click on that.
That's a dead end.
And now go up to laser pointer. You see the, you see the menu that's come up. Now click laser pointer. Right. Can you see that, Mr. Mayor?
I do.
Perfect. Right here. Can you see that red dot?
Yes.
There we go, bullseye.
So that's a dead end. Is that what we're saying?
You're telling, you're.
It is, but he's indicating that it already has a T turnaround at that area, but.
Guys, and we'll, we'll make sure that what you're asking for is adequate just for a turnaround. That's what you asked for. And we'll make sure that if we make any changes to the construction plans, that that gets made also because we, we want the water and sewer services to hit the lot line.
Right.
So we.
On the left side, all the way over, if you can move your red dot. How do you get, how do they turn around?
That's a T turnaround, and that's larger than what's required. And McFarland also is to the west, going towards the striped yellow, is the emergency access that was asked to be put in there for Columbia Lane.
And what about going east?
Going east, that's only 100 feet. So that backup is well within the allowable limits for a fire truck and a solid waste truck.
Is that access to Columbia Lane going to be open, or is that gated for emergencies only?
I'll be honest with you, I don't remember, but we are not going to have it open as a street because it's not a paved street.
No.
I was going to say, if you don't have it gated, people are going to use it.
It'll, it'll be policed by the HOA if nothing else.
Yeah.
And it's going to be green and grass, and people are going to mow it because it's state.
You satisfy my concerns if you handle the one at the end of that track. If, if we can word it the right way, that's fine with me. You would satisfy mine. As far as, as far as T turn, I think that's appropriate.
Couch the motion that way so that we can make the change and get the Mylar in and get us recorded and move on this calendar year is what we're looking for. Thank you.
Also, can you address, Christie, the traffic light situation? Because they're not, right now, how many exits are out of this development?
Well, on, on the screen, you know, you have Dunes Avenue having one access near its south property line, and then having a shared access with the subdivision to the north at St. John's Heritage Lakes. And that's where the signal would go. That's already an existing cut, meaning a driveway sort of cut off of St. John's Parkway. And they want to put a signal there. They would make, you know, those lanes coming into it a little bit bigger. But it doesn't show up on this one because it's actually part of the next subdivision in terms of that, that road track. But they technically would have because they would be connected to that road track. They technically would have two ways in and out. And remember, they're less than 200 lots, so they're fine with one.
Okay, so they both won't be open when this development opens?
Yeah, I believe, and this is where I asked the development team to clarify. I thought the development timing was that the signal was going to be built at the same time as the Dunes subdivision was going to be built.
Our goal is to proceed with the signal coincident with the development of the subdivision. Lassiter Transportation is designing the signal. My understanding, it's about three-quarters designed. We want to. Uh, we want to put into production the mast arms. That's the, the lead time to get a signal going, and it behooves the sales program to make everybody feel safer with a signal, so we're not going to put it off.
Okay, because it said something about, um, comes up as, as you sell lots, but that's not the truth?
The signal, and our traffic engineer's in the, in the, in the audience here if we need him, but the signal is warranted at completion of both developments, but both people developing in there want the signal as early as they can to make their customers feel safe.
All right, thank you.
And if I could ask a clarification, um, I, I know Mr. Globbitt sat down, but he asked for sort of a, a code lessening because of the curves of the, the two lots, and I didn't quite know what that means because we need to know what that is if that's something we're going to put in the condition.
Councilmember Frampton asked for some sort of turnaround at the end of tract A. I said that we had one in the construction plans. If he wants a larger one, uh, lot 19 and 20, based on cord length, become excessively big because the cord length is also, um, applied to the rear lot line on the circle at the lake where a person could slide the lot line and not make it perpendicular to the roadway, like you could take the southern line of lot 21 and curve it over, move the other ones over, give us a little bit more room for the T-turnaround that you're, you're requesting, or just the turnaround. We aren't specifying what it's going to be yet, but it will be an adequate turnaround.
So if, if I could just ask, so what you're saying, lots 19 and 20, instead of sort of big, thick wedges of pie, they're going to become slimmer? Is that what you're asking for?
You know, we can do it without that, but it, but the code for those pie-shaped lots, quite honestly, when you look at it, if, if you live on lot 18 and you live on lot 21, you, you ask your neighbor, why do you got such a big lot, lot on lot 20? It's just the way the code's written.
Or they might say, why is my lot so small?
They might say that too.
I'm sure they'll be charged for a larger lot.
Yeah.
But we, we could make them a little more equal in there.
So we're not worried about that code change tonight, is what he's saying.
All right, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Frampton, your light is on.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat as written with the chain, which, with the addition of the, however, Mr. Richardson thinks we need to word that. Just the condition that we have a, some T-turnaround or...
...to turn around at the end of block E there, the north end of McFarland Drive.
Have a larger, because on the construction drawings it already exists, so he's asking for a larger turnaround.
Well, he said it had to meet certain...
It did already.
...requirements with, with...
I don't think we're sure if it needs to be larger because they can't see what it is, and I don't, do we have a way to show what's shown on the construction drawings?
I can bring her out of her server to get my server.
And I'm fine that once they work it out with you, that we still move forward and do the, the conditional approval with the, knowing that they're going to, uh, be able to turn around.
I understand. I want to make sure Mr. Richardson's okay with...
I understand what the condition is, sure.
Okay.
Mr. Ditmore?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm second to motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, including the changes that they specified. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. All right. All right, next action item is item 7D, final plat for the St. John's Heritage Lakes North.
All right, so this is the, the other subdivision that I referenced, and this is to the north of the Dunes. So this is also one that has come before you all as a preliminary plat, and the engineer of records, Scott Globbitt, you may hear from Ken Lidwa about it like you did with the other one. As I said, it's the same location, it's just north of the one we just talked about, and this property is almost 58 acres. What they're doing is they're showing seven parcels on that black and white drawing that's called the plat or subdivision layout, and a multi-family parcel. So they'll, they would have six commercial parcels and one multi-family parcel, and it includes a bunch of other, um, pieces of that development, and then they would have a little bit of road track, sanitary lift station. That sanitary lift station would be public. That hasn't changed from when they came through as the, the preliminary plat, a signage, open space, stormwater tract, some green area, a utility, open space, pass of recreation use. And just like we did with the other one, we also took this at the same time to our planning and zoning board November 29th, and they recommended approval. You all are the governing body. So again, looking at an aerial view and looking at the red polygon, this is the one that is actually on that curve, portion of the St. John's Heritage Parkway, whereas the other one didn't have quite as much of the curb frontage. So again, the, they're doing the same thing as the Dunes. They're not constructing the infrastructure at this point. They're going to post performance bonds for what is needed, and just like the other one, there's still three conditions that remain. We're going to go through it, and that's from when they, they submitted the preliminary plat to the city. And, um, I believe Councilmember Frampton had asked me some questions about whether some of the other items were adhered to, and I, I just want to distinguish that, remember for this development, there's two things that are going on. There's a subdivision plat, and what already occurred was the initial site plan approval for the Eden Living rental community. And so what Mr. Frampton will probably ask me in a few minutes to clarify are the conditions that went with that Eden Living initial site plan and not really part of the plat, but I'm happy to talk about those two. All right, so the biggest thing for you all to know is that with parcel seven, it, it grew, it increased in size from the November 29th Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and it had to do something after that meeting because one of the conditions of approval was that we knew as staff from the construction drawings for that rental community that there were some questions about them meeting setbacks. Remember, we talked about setbacks on the other one. Well, on, on the Eden Living, there were some questions about setback, and in order to meet setbacks on all their sides, they increased the parcel seven. Um, and so now they're compliant. Um, as a result, parcel seven increased by, this is just rough math, 16 acres, and tract A, which was their road track, became smaller. Um, so we'll look at that here in a minute. The tract information is that, you know, parcel seven was just for the multi-family before, but now it includes some infrastructure, including the road easement that's right next to, um, well, between the commercial and the multi-family. And then the, um, sanitary lift station related improvements, that's still there, so that, that would be public. But everything else on this property is private, it's not city-owned, only the lift station, which would serve as a regional lift station, and, and that's a good thing for our infrastructure. All right, I, I just wanted to point out the tracks because I know it gets a little bit wonky on the plans. That's not a technical term, but you have this, tract A, and I, we put the little symbol for the, the signal. You know, that's where they're proposing to do it. So when I said for Dunes that the signal would be on this property, that, that's showing you that it would be indeed on this, you know, axis where there's already a curb cut, there's already sort of a driveway apron. Um, they're going to have to make modifications to that, and obviously all that permitting is with the county. And tract A is going to end at the lift station, so that's going to be the sanitary lift station. Um, and they do have this little tract C that's for some of their monumentation and, you know, beautification that they're going to do to enter into the area. Um, tract B is one that doesn't really play a part in this because this is sort of leftover property from when FDOT built, you know, the interchange and they had to have a pond area. This is just like a, a triangle that doesn't do much, but it is part of the subdivision, it's just open space. That's how it's listed. And then tract E was the sign parcel where they're going to have that, that sign that I believe they showed you many months ago. Um, and this is something I believe Councilmember Frampton asked me about was whether they did make some changes to that sign, and Mr. Morgan and I looked at it. Uh, you all had asked for the lettering on that sign, that, that sort of tower sign to be a little larger, to be a little more prominent, and they did do that. So that shows up on the construction drawings. Again, that doesn't show up on these black and white drawings, which are just for the lot layout. All right, with the commercial parcels, um, these are the parcels one through six that have frontage on the St. John's Heritage Parkway. And then parcel seven, where that Eden Living community was going to go, is behind that. So instead of having like a, a tract for a road in between the commercial and the multi-family, they're going to have this right-of-way in an easement. If you have questions about how that works, I'm sure Mr. Richardson could tell you, but it is legal, they could do that. So that was one of the changes. And as far as concurrency, you know, they, they do meet, but again, most of this is really found out through the construction drawings, but they do meet all our minimum concurrency requirements. Um, we talked about the signal, and, yeah, there's not much more to, to say about that. With the other requirements, they do conform to FS stands for Florida statutes, and again, our surveyor reviewed it. And then if you have questions about the recordation and when there, the sales transactions occur, Mr. Richardson could answer those. Um, so again, the engineer, city engineer in the audience, he reviewed the construction drawings along with other departments, and this one's almost approved. Um, the city of West Melbourne will provide water and sewer lines, just like we did the Dunes, and then we talked about the legal review that Mr. Richardson does. Um, again, just like any development in the city, they have to meet, you know, the requirements of other agencies. So in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Board on November 29th, you know, recommended that you all approve the final plat, and I've listed the conditions. Number six, if you look at the wording that I have on the screen, is, it's new because since they made a change to the plat where they changed what was a tract for roadway into an easement with the right-of-way in it, I wanted to make sure that, you know, the documentation that they submitted, and I believe that was today or yesterday, we just got that documentation, I'm looking at Mr. Richardson because we both got it, was to address that in perpetuity, that Heritage Lakes Boulevard is always traversable. No one decides to get mad at their neighbor and put, you know, roadblocks up in, at roadway and whatnot. And like I said, we just got that documentation, I think it was yesterday. But I still like it as a condition.
Can you explain a little bit item five? If they eliminate...
Yes.
Across the county, turn them down?
Yeah, um, that has to do with, if I can go back to that sheet to show you those parcels, um, if you look at where they've indicated Sharp's Way and the words Merritt Place, uh, once again, instead of having separate tracks that, that show Sharp's Way, they're showing that that would be part of either parcel two and three or part of parcel four and five. And so what I'm saying to you is that they still need to get county approval, you know, for any connection to St. John's Heritage Parkway. So let's say the county says, nope, you're not going to have connection of Sharp's Way. Technically, there kind of needs to be some change because this is the way they showed it. So that's all I'm saying in that condition. You know, whether they come back and replat, as we've had some people do, or, you know, through the city attorney, they figure out another way to sort of address that. Um, so that, that's what we mean.
They're actually looking at putting two, two additional...
Yes.
Roads?
Mm-hmm. Sharp's Way and Merritt Place.
But if they both get denied, then we only have one entrance into this place?
Well, that would also have to be reviewed because you're right. I mean, we, something would have to be done.
But that's later on during the, down the road, right? After they are...
It is later on, yeah. So they're not going to be able to, you know, start their construction without, you know, getting the, uh, the permits from the county. So that's our safeguard.
Is that clear to them? They, they'll know that?
That's pretty standard. Anything else?
Mr. Frampton?
Yeah, just what you talked about earlier. We had, uh, put additional conditions on there about, talked about the sidewalks, talked about the mailbox area, and we also talked about having enough room for the larger fire trucks to be able to get through, and, uh, as you indicated to me, that was all taken care of and, and, uh...
It, it was. So there's, um, after the initial site plan approval, just like Epic, I said to you, the next stage is then they do their 100% civil engineer drawings that comes to staff, and we all review it, all the departments involved. So we did the same thing, and we absolutely made sure that they submitted a sheet with a revised, what they call an auto-turn template, that showed the dimension of that larger truck and how it maneuvered through the site. So that is not going to show up on these drawings, but that showed up on the...
Did adjustments have to be made or not?
They, they made slight adjustments, and, and their engineer can tell you a little bit more about that, but, yeah, they, they made it.
And do you know what the change was for the mailbox area that we talked about?
The mailbox area, what you're talking about is where the clubhouse is and where one of the gates was, um, that you all did not want people who were at that gate to jump out and to go right into the building to check on their mail. So they closed that off, so there is no entrance, there is no door, because on the plans it showed sort of doors swinging out or, or allowing people. So they, they changed that. And then the sidewalks in front of all the, sort of the two-story units, they just deleted those. There is no little bits of sidewalks in between each, so that's how they addressed that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
All right. Do we need a motion on this?
I do.
Mr. Frampton?
I'll make a motion. We approve the final plat of the mixed-use subdivision known as St. John's Heritage Lakes North as written.
Mr. Ditmore?
Second.
And was there any change in that, Ms. Fisher, at all that we needed to note?
Um, just with that, that condition, you know, that, that you all have, that you want to see whether they, you know, add an easement or, you know, they make the modifications to that tract A.
That was in the other...
I'm sorry, you're right. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I really don't want to derail the train here, but I did want to ask your city attorney something. To satisfy condition number six, um, from an engineer, surveyor standpoint, I'm thinking that we could, uh, label those easements, uh, perpetual easements, and maybe that would satisfy the condition, only to alleviate our lawyer coming up with agreement, your city lawyer having to review the agreement. The perpetual, if that word is added, we're fine with that if, if that gives the city comfort. And on number five, uh, I know you've moved past that, but I just want to let you know that Lassiter Transportation Group is designing those accesses. They've already had their first responsive comments from the county, and the county comments were limited to spelling, grammar, and nothing technical. I was really kind of embarrassed by the letter we got with the com, by the county, but that's what we received. So that's in the process of final permitting. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, do I have to change my motion or...
No, um, because those items in six, it's really not just about how it's labeled on the plat, it's, it's about, you know, maintenance and, um, because there's going to be an association that administers the, and maintains the common areas and then the improvements that everyone relies on. It was easier when the entire roadway was in a tract. Um, just some language had to change with it being placed in an easement, and I think that Ms. Fisher's correct in saying we may have already received the revised agreement that addresses comment six, but if not, we'll get it. But no, your, your motion can stand, which I believe was to approve the, um, the plat with the conditions as displayed there.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, somebody saying aye. Aye, oppose. Motion carries seven zero. Item 7D, change the names or private driveway names for Eden Multi Family at St. John's?
Yeah, uh, uh, any, um, project that is not part of a plat that involves, you know, residential units, um, E-911 has us provide a resolution to you all, you know, indicating the approved driveway names, and so that's what you all have in front of you. Um, I'll try to answer any questions, but again, it, it's no different than what we've done in the past, so if you can entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Baccador?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When it comes to calls for service... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When it comes to calls for service, is there any other, is there ever any concern about pronunciation or syllable mix-ups with road names that are incredibly similar? For example, Heritage Lakes Boulevard and Heritage Oaks Boulevard. If somebody is putting in a call for service, they could be in a panic, and that could be misheard, and that could result in a lower quality of service for emergency services. Has there any consideration been put into that? Because when I first read this, I was like, we already have a Heritage Lakes Boulevard.
Believe me, I've gone round and round with the property owner about heritage, and that's why some of this changed to St. John's, you know, like St. John's Heritage Lakes North. But to answer your question, the county does. They have like a list of criteria that they go through, and one of it's locational. So when you talked about, we already have a Heritage Oaks Boulevard, because there's significant enough distance, and I don't know exactly what the criteria is, I just know there's significant enough distance between that one and this one, they felt that that could be used. So I can, we can go back and kind of prod them in the future on that, but I kind of am afraid the boat has already sailed on this one.
So would it be correct to assume that the emergency response dispatcher actually gets a geolocation on where the call's coming from?
They do. They get that triangulation, but I don't know if you've ever been at the 911 center, I have. And so I've listened to the calls and how, you know, what they do is they really try to get, even though you're right, the caller's usually in distress or upset of some sort, they try to get more information about sort of their location. And so in this case, they would probably ask him what major road, because that's what I've heard them say, what major road are you off of? And that would help, you know, besides the triangulation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Do we have a motion on this one yet?
Yes, we do. Does Mr. Yes, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Dittmore did the second one.
Okay.
Didn't you do the second in there?
Yeah, that was the other one. Okay, we need a motion on this one. Mr. Frampton?
I'll make a motion. We approve the, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page now. The street names, is that what it is?
Resolution 202130.
As written, yeah.
Second rows, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries seven zero. Switching gears here a little bit, we have our crowd favorite, the annual lining of our sanitary sewer gravity lines. Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members.
Good evening.
This is our annual U-lining that we do every year. We've been doing this for the past 14 years with Incitraform. As you can see, this year, we're looking to do 700 to 700, 7,245 feet of eight-inch sewer pipe for this year's lining. We have a list of 10 roads that we are doing. We're working off the pricing off of still going with Daytona Beach, piggybacking on their contract. And our total amount for this project is $238,247.80. We have budgeted for this year for this amount is $240,000, so we are under our budgeted amount of what we're looking to do. So with that, it's my recommendation for city council to approve and award the contract to Incitraform Technologies an amount of $238,247.80.
How many companies do this type of work?
I'm not sure.
Again, I'm going to ask this. I know we can piggyback, and that's real easy, just cut and paste, but how do you know this is a good value? How do we know that Daytona Beach weren't in a bad situation and just had to take their price?
The reason why we piggyback off other counties and other locations is because they're doing quantity. We're not doing quantity. We're not going to get a dollar amount pricing for the little that we do. The contract for Daytona Beach is over 10,000 feet that they do. So their quantity is based on pricing. It's the same with our paving, our resurfacing.
What's that?
We're doing 7,000.
Yeah.
There are more, though. It's the same with our pricing for our paving. We do such a minimal amount of paving that the contracts for these counties are miles. They're doing miles. So that's how the pricing works.
It seems like we ought to shop around for, is this the best value?
They're, they do everybody around. They do Melbourne, they do Palm Bay.
I'm guessing he's asking, have we ever tried? I mean, at least to say, hey, we're doing the right thing. Have we ever tried getting other prices from somewhere?
No, I've just been following along what's been going on prior to driving here, so.
I mean, it
I mean, we could.
And we should. I mean, it just seems like we're spending over $20 a linear foot, and what, $30,000, $35,000 just for mobilization and that kind of stuff. It just
If anything, just to validate the process.
Yeah. I mean, we normally get more than one bid, and just to keep them honest and keep us. Mr. Baccador?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the piggybacking, in my understanding, enables that linear price per foot at 2310. Were we to have an independent contractor not piggyback off of that, we would be, that company would actually be forced to buy a lower amount, whereby the price per linear foot would increase. So with bulk buying, of course, you get a better bid per price. And also with the call-out, of course, they're already coming down to the local area. So there's going to be significant cost savings. So I'm quite comfortable moving forward with this as it's written, but it would be a good exercise just to make sure that these are competitive prices for future fiscal years, perhaps. Thank you.
Yeah, because I think there's a lot of different variables. Where did the company come from to go to Daytona? Were they local going, you know, the next city over, or do they come from Tallahassee, because that was their next job? Because it does cost money for hotels and everything else, because they don't go home every night. And so I think it's just good management. Mr. Dittmore?
We don't have a motion yet, do we, Mr. Mayor?
We do not.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve and award the contract to Incitraform Technologies. I'll see an amount of $238,247.80 for lining the 7,245 feet linear feet of eight-inch pipe.
Thank you, Mr. Baccador.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Frampton?
Maybe next year, when we look at this lining project again, we can send it out for bids, just to make sure we're getting the right values. Does that sound all right, Mark?
All right. And also, they have different pricing for depending how dirty it is before they U-line it? They don't
It's based on the diameter of the pipe.
Okay.
Each diameter has a different price quotation for
Because they have in their
The larger the pipe, the more it's going to be
Well, the more, yeah, the more material. But they also have a section here, depending on how dirty the pipe is, how much clean they have to do, but I don't
What they do is they'll go through and they camera everything to document it for us. And at that time, if a pipe needs cleaning, they will clean it. So it's more of a documentation that we get every year of the pipe, so we could see what exactly we have underground.
All right. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Do you know how much of the diameter you lose each time you use this? Is it an inch or something?
No, it's not even that much. This lining is eight millimeters. So it's a very thin
It's not a pipe that gets slid out in the
That's why.
Sleeve. Is that what you said, sleeve?
Yeah.
But is that like eight millimeters times four, kind of?
Yeah, there's two sides of the, the top and the bottom.
And the east and west. Wow. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another quick item is beside the price, which we all seem to be focused on right now, there'll be quality parameters that you'll need to follow as well. And I would reiterate the need to go out there and just to make sure that we're validating that we are getting competitive pricing, but to identify those quality indicators and give us adequate time to review this versus kind of feeling, I feel a little bit pressured to kind of just move forward with this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries seven zero. Which brings us to our next lift station rehab project.
Yes, we have one lift station that we're looking to rehab. It's a total rehabilitation of the lift station. It's the Shoney's Lift Station. We did send it out to bid. We got two responses, one from Danus Utilities and one from SDV Services. As you can see, Danus was the lower bidder at $161,148, and SDV Services' proposal was at $195,825. We also have material that the city purchases, which are the pumps and the electrical panel, control panel, that will be installed as a total rehab for this lift station, which will cost us, for that material, $55,520. Combine those two with the lowest bid, the total project comes out to $216,668. So with that, it's my recommendation that the city council approve, award the contract to Danus Utilities in the amount of $161,148, and for us to purchase the equipment of expenditure of $55,520 to Barney's Pump.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
Have you used Danus before?
Yes.
And I know we use Barney pumps for our replacements, correct? I'll make a motion. We approve and award the contract to Danus Utilities and the purchase of the equipment from Barney's Pumps as written.
Thank you, Mr. Dittmore.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tim Rhodey. He's going to tell us about the reuse replacement project.
Fun stuff. We're up to the fun stuff.
Save that for the end. Said we save that for the end.
We save the good stuff for the end. Mayor, council, good evening. We have two task orders in front of you. We'll start with the first one, Hollywood Boulevard reused project. Looking to use ISS, our engineering services, to approve a task order for them to do, to design the reconstruct of a reuse line along Hollywood. The engineering and construction is $440,000 estimate for the total package. The ISS task order, we're looking for approval this evening, $17,048. A little bit about the project, the reuse water line along Hollywood Boulevard, about 1,650 linear feet. This is a line, I've been told, obviously not here, but I've been told this line, one of the reasons we're looking to redo this line, it's had some pops in the past, it's had some issues with some
Sorry, it's had some issues with some pops in the past. Also, right now, currently, the reuse line is under the road. When Hollywood, the road got redone, this line is under there. This would be moving it outside of that area. So we're looking to, it's got a little bit longer of a lead time than we'd prefer, adding in a little bit of time to work with the county to get the permitting process. But this would be, if we get the go-ahead with this task order this evening, we would put this together, and this would be a project sometime, hopefully out to bid and constructed sometime around this time next year. So it's about a year out to get to construction.
Thank you, Mr. Dittmore.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Peak my curiosity, you said you wanted, the line's going to run above ground?
No, I'm sorry. The line will be outside of the roadway.
Oh, outside the roadway, I'm sorry, okay.
Outside of the actual road. It'll be in the right-of-way. Right now, it's currently under the road, which is
Okay, I understand.
Not, I
I understand, I understand. My mistake.
That going to require tearing up Hollywood Boulevard?
All right. So the other question I had for you is, what's that? I'm sorry.
I was just curious, that line under the road, I didn't know if it was going to tear up Hollywood Boulevard to remove it, or are we just leaving it in place and putting in a new line?
So we will have to take action to abandon the line, but I don't believe we'll be opening Hollywood up to abandon that line.
Okay. So are we going all the way down Hollywood Boulevard to, do we get to those neighborhoods that use the reused water? Because I have a question, because we've always had a kind of chronic issue going on, going into Stratford Point from Hollywood Boulevard into Hammock Lake. So I don't know if that's going to be an opportunity to fix that, or are we still going to be stuck with that same problem we have?
So this, so the replacing of the line is not going to give us any more sufficient capacity. However, we are making improvements at the plant to help with the capacity issue.
Yeah, just look, we have a, I don't know if you're aware of it, we have an issue between those two particular neighborhoods where they're manually shutting off in the middle of the, during the reuse day, for them, they're splitting the morning and the afternoon hours up, so they're after manually send someone out there. I'm sorry, someone has to go out there and manually shut off the valve in the mornings and then turn it back on in the afternoons. So I don't know if there was a, if that was going to be included, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, the project does not include a change out on that location to an automated valve. We have several automated valves in the system, but that's not one of them. It's a little bit off-site for this project. So that would sort of be a separate piece of work that we could consider in a future budget.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the task order with Infrastructure Solutions Services for the Hollywood reuse replacement project as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Baccador.
Second with questions?
Yes.
Is it a bypass?
I'm sorry.
Is it essentially a bypass?
No, this would be our main, our reuse main.
Right, but it will connect at the northern end and connect at the southern end and bypass the problem pipe?
Correct. The problem pipe will be abandoned. I
Right. So that'll be filled with concrete or some other thing.
Well, and just let me put a little brisk notion in that, because Hollywood is a county road, we would need the county's permission to fill the old line with slurry. And that's not in accordance with their current policy. We've gotten some limited exceptions to that, just, but I don't know that we can assure that we're going to be successful in that. So just so the council's aware, the county's current policy is to have us remove the abandoned pipe rather than it, to me, it would be better to leave it in place and fill it with flowable fill, but that's not the county's current policy.
That affect the price of this? Sorry.
If we could get flowable fill, it would cost less and would do less impact to motorists. There's a lot of good reasons we would ask the county to let us flowable fill, but there's no assurance that that would be the outcome.
Which brings me to my next question. How much anticipated road blockages will there be to disrupt traffic flow along Hollywood during this work?
Every project has road disturbances.
All right.
If we are able to use the fill technique with the old pipe substantially less, if we have to take that pipe out, there's just no way around the fact that that's going to have to impact that.
Understood. All I ask is that you please make sure that the residents in and around that area are well-informed about when that road is going to become a nightmare for the third time in three years. Thank you.
Fair comment.
Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is about a third of a mile or so. Is the current pipe at capacity, the 16-inch pipe, water flow-wise?
Well, it's under pressure, so it's at its, it's doing its job. I mean, it's a high-pressure pipe.
My, I didn't know why you wouldn't put a bigger pipe in, for example, if you, if we were
No, I'm going to have to defer to some engineers, or I might have to defer to Jacobs as to the size of the pipe. I mean, the system is designed to function, you know, that's, to me, ISS has it, we'll be looking at if there's any efficiencies in change of pipe. But, you know, in general, your system is designed a specific way. If you're removing one pipe for another pipe, you're trying to stay consistent because of the pressures.
We will have them look at that. I mean, generally, it's, is this as a replacement of a failing pipe rather than a capacity increase? rather than a capacity-increasing pipe? Now, I will also let the council know that a condition of our sanitary sewer plant permit, our operating permit, our five-year operating permit, is to look to see how we might expand our reuse system in the future. And so we certainly are going to task ISS with that notion of where might we expand in association with that. If there were some opportunities at the south end of the system, then that could feed into that notion of, would it be valuable or not to consider a change in the pipe diameter? I don't know until we really do the, sort of the master plan of expansion, whether, but at this point, it's considered a replacement project.
But you will consider maybe going, I'm making this up, I don't know, a 20-inch pipe or something, since you're not taking the old one out? Or your hope is to not take the old one out?
And if there were opportunity for expanding the system and you needed that. Now, obviously, as you get greater diameters, you actually lose pressure more, right? So it's both a capacity and a pressure problem, and it may potentially be that you're better off with a two-inch smaller diameter pipe to increase pressures at the extreme end of the system. So maybe not a capacity problem, but a, but a, how much line loss do you have on the way?
But you guys are going to evaluate.
Yeah, that's, we'll have the engineers look at those alternatives. Those are all great questions.
When was the last pipe put in? How long did this last?
No, we just replaced some of those, because we didn't tear up Hollywood just recently.
For reuse, or?
No, we made some repairs, and that's why we want to do this project, is because, I want to say three times have we had? Four times? So that's, that's the purpose of the project, is to stop having us have breaks at the bells primarily. I'm presuming, you know, this is a kind of a major maintenance project, a replacement of the existing line that has failed four times in recent couple, few years.
So it's kind of a 20-year replacement maintenance cycle, it sounds like?
No, I think 20 years is shorter than the average life of a reuse. I don't know if there were...
We went 20, right?
Yeah, I don't know if there were challenges when it came in. I don't, 20 seems a little light for a reuse. It is high-pressure, though. I mean, it's a high-pressure system.
How much have we spent on repairs so far, and do they accomplish what they're supposed to?
They fixed the break. It probably won't break in that location again.
I guess, I'm trying to wrap my hands. Why are we doing this?
We're doing this because we are at risk of additional breaks.
Well, all over the city, we're at risk for additional.
Well, but this is a known risk area.
Trying to identify our biggest challenges. Additionally, this is in the roadway, which is just, makes it even more complicated when there are breaks.
What makes it more complicated also is Hollywood Boulevard is slated to be four-laned. So how do you know if the new pipe you're putting in is in the outside lane?
Because the county has completed their design work, and we will have our engineer work with the ultimate Hollywood in mind.
That's why the lead time with the engineer is a little bit longer than the normal, because we've got to coordinate everything with the county.
It just seems like this is a project that we could put off because it's not broken? And if we didn't have the American Rescue dollars, would we still be doing this project?
Yes.
That was a what?
At the yes, because we think this is our highest reuse risk, and because it's in the, under the pavement, when it does break, it creates problems for our residents and motorists. Again, where we've done the repairs, it's probably not going to break there again, but we know at these bells, it's broken four times in, what, four or five years, six years?
And how much have we spent?
20, 30 grand a pop, probably. 40? Emergency contracts, because, and so 200,000?
Mr. Dipmore?
This may be one of those, you know, pay me now or pay me later kinds of things.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address Councilmember Bentley's concerns. My community's on the very end of that reuse line, I mean, the very, very end. The pressure, we, there was probably a time, I don't know, Mr. Morgan, what was it, about six years ago, five, six years ago, we had problems with the pressure being really low. And since then, they've did some changes. That pressure right now, I really wouldn't want to change that pressure, because any higher, they were already blowing heads off of sprinkler heads constantly, and water shooting about 20, 15, 20 feet in the air regularly. And so even when we have, during the high-use periods, it's, it's working, is what I'm trying to say. So if we adjust further and go higher, it's going to be problematic, and we're going to have a lot of people trying to fix these sprinkler heads, and they're constantly, right now is really a problem, right now, they're constantly breaking. We're having a lot of issues, probably more with some of the homes, because as they're getting older, some of those systems are starting to break down on the residential side, because those houses are around 20 years old now. So those are starting to break on the residential side, and we're starting to see breaks already. But some of it, I believe, is because the pressure increased. It's not only the sprinkler heads are breaking, some of the lines are breaking. So I'd just be real careful about adjusting that pressure up or doing anything to make it any higher than it is. I just wanted to bring that up. But right now, it's working. Pressure's good, so at this point, so.
Mr. Dipmore alluded to the system not working right as far as the changing of, they have to go out there manually. Something that we know is broken, why is that not included, or why are we not fixing that?
The manual versus automatic?
No, it's both, it's an automated system.
Well, we have, we have some valves that are automated and controlled by the plant. The valve that Mr. Dipmore has described is not automated, and so, was it twice a week we go out there? Twice a week Jacobs goes out there and turns the valve, so it's whatever that labor cost is to Jacobs for that twice-a-week service versus the capital cost of trying to tie that into our automated system, and that's kind of analysis we haven't done.
Aren't we getting ready to do the roads over in that area, on Sedgwick, Stratford Point? And that's going to come up another year or so, maybe that'd be a good time to address that when the roads are redone.
I'd look to Mark for that five-year plan. I think you're right, that that's probably coming up in the fairly near term, and that's a good time to look at valves and...
Because, yeah, the roads are already going to be tore up anyway.
Well, and again, depending on what the road treatment is, but...
Do we have a lot of manual valves for reuse?
Ms. Young?
Yeah, we have more manual than automated, right, Brian?
Come on up, Brian.
We have one manual, and then the rest are all...
Oh, they're all automated. Okay, that's the only manual one.
We bought the Cadillac system, I remember that, yeah.
Backup is the manual version. We have to physically go on site to open it if the automated system fails.
Deputy Mayor Young?
I just wanted to comment that since I live right there at Westbrook, and this is right where Florida Avenue comes right in there to Hollywood, so you've got Oak Grove, Linwood, Stratford Point in Westbrook. So when we try to come out of our subs and try to get down to Hollywood, when that road is torn up, it is awful. And in peak hours, when the traffic's already coming down Hollywood and that's torn up, it's awful. So it would be very nice to get that fixed, get it out from underneath the road and get it fixed once and for all. So thank you for bringing this.
If we have to remove that pipe, you think that adds about 25% to the budget and making this close to a million-dollar project?
A lot you've got to add.
Yeah.
I don't know the answer. Certainly, we'll be working to try to convince them that the right approach to this is to fill it with flowable fill and leave it in place.
Good luck, because they, we tried that before on this other road, and I don't think they did that.
Yeah.
They also charge us for those permits, don't they?
Yes, we were successful at the north end of Hollywood. You probably remember when the county did the minor widening approaching 192, added a third northbound lane. They kind of did with their own force account some improvements there. They let us do a flowable fill for an abandoned line there, so we have had some success, and on Hollywood.
Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I might as well chime in here, because I'm in the center of that rectangle. And my question is, is that you're on the east side of the road, is if I read that correctly, that's where the work is going to be done, which is the side that I'm on. Is there a reason why east versus west, just pick that side?
I think it's based on where the road, the new road is going to be, and so we're, obviously coordinated with the county to make sure we're outside of their new road, so we don't...
Most of the county road widening is to the west.
Okay, and just to kind of follow up, is that that is, I mean, I, really, the traffic is now blocking the exits or the, into the different developments there during the rush hour period. So this is really, really important, we get the communication out there as to when and how long, and what are our options of getting around it. Thank you.
Also, it's probably good to get the engineering done, and then we can first assess it to see what it's, what it really costs, because, again, like somebody once said, if it ain't broke right now, don't, let's not tear up the road. So, again, we'll have to balance that. All right, we have a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. Motion carries seven zero.
Next project...
Last item?
Sorry, next project up is a water main project. We're going to cross Wickham, just a little bit north of 192. Going to work with engineering firm CMA. We've had some luck with Chenmore in and around the 192 area, working with, working with the DOT, working with the county, trying to, trying to get a lot of permits in a real tight area. So decided to go with that firm, gave us a number not to exceed 129, I'm sorry, I should probably put my glasses on. 129, 950 is the, is the task order amount. The construction amount estimated for this is 350. That's a pretty good number for a short distance that we're looking to do, but keep in mind that particular stretch of water main that we're trying to cross Wickham, very challenging, lots of utilities, lots of O utilities, very tight spot to get across. And so one of the items that I just want to point out, I guess the key items why we're looking at this project, first and foremost, this does tie in the Winn-Dixie complex when we are no longer with Melbourne. So key item, got to get service over there. Second item is, if you look on the second page, or their lead page of their task order, or scope of service that they call it, the area in general has a couple of different West Melbourne water lines, that dead end, in and around this area. And so one of the items that we're doing is kind of taking a comprehensive look and seeing how they can all tie in, so they can all loop together. We have just three different lines that come in from different areas. And so this has been an item identified by Hazen on their report for the backbone of the water utility. And while it comes with, comes with a price tag, this is definitely an important item to tie in our system, so.
And it's a miracle it was only $50 under budget, so, I mean, do they get to see our budget and kind of bid that way, or they just...
Well, we do, you know, we do reach out to the firms and get quotes on what they're looking to do, and that's how we establish our, but this has been in the budget for multiple years, and so this is just an item that, you know, we get estimates of what they think a task order will cost, and it rolls up.
Mr. Dipmore?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to authorize the city manager execute the task, professional engineering task order with CMA for the Wickham Road Water Main Crossing Project as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Dipmore? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose. Motion carries seven zero, which brings us to the city council reports. Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. Up first is Deputy Mayor Andrea Young, her first time up first.
Thank you very, very much. Two things I have. The Brightline representative came to the TPO meeting, and she gave us an update on what is going on with the train. It was very, very interesting, and I'd like her to come and speak to the rest of the group, because there was so much information that was coming out from the train, that if she comes to the group and explains it herself, then she has a PowerPoint, and you can ask questions on your own. I realize we don't have any train tracks going through West Melbourne, but everywhere the train goes, we go. So, I mean, we're going to be driving over the tracks continuously, so maybe in January, Mr. Morgan, maybe perhaps, or whoever's going to handle the agenda for January, do you think maybe she could come then? Or just give me the, whatever meeting is best, and then...
Yeah, we can request their availability, as it sounds like you wanted to have that sooner rather than later.
Yes, absolutely, sooner than later. All right, then, at your chairs, you'll see these two handouts that I gave to you. We'll start with the one that's dark in the front, if you would, please. These are FDOT. This is their five-year work program, and I have my pages marked off here. So on pages, on page four, you'll see that we have things that are not only within West Melbourne, but that are very close to us or that affect us in some way. You'll see here on page four, the project that they're doing for the aviation preservation project, which is down in Valkaria. So I know, again, we don't have an airport here, but this is relevant to us, because we do have a lot of people that do fly into that private airport privately, so that does come into our purview. On the next airport, I'm sorry, on the next page, then page five, this is our Melbourne International Airport. These, again, these are TPO projects that are going there, and closer to home, page nine, if you would look at that, please, that is St. John's Heritage Parkway, Ellis Road. It's like right halfway down. And then there are two of them, and this is for the money that has, that they already are holding for funding, for the widening and for the work to be done on St. John's Heritage Parkway, which is actually Ellis. I'm sorry, it's not the Parkway at all, it's Ellis, and then Ellis from John Rhodes, west of Wickham. So I just, I wanted you to see these updates and what is in the five-year program. On the next page, also, you'll see the Hollywood at 192. This was, this has been brought up a year, so instead of being the 23, 24 year for the project to be done, it's 22, 23. So this improvement to Hollywood at 192, and of course, going across the street over where it's Evans, I'm sure as we, as we all come down that way, you know, that piece of concrete that's in the middle there on Evans, when you're trying to cross over, it's very difficult there, because there's, people are trying to turn left, you're trying to go straight, others are going right. That whole intersection there is going to be improved, and that will no longer be there. And then, of course, as you come across the road where you, if you're trying to turn left from 192 onto Hollywood, it's very, very narrow. It's one lane that you have to aim in. If you're driving an RV or you're driving a larger vehicle trying to do that, it can be, you'll need a lot of focus in order to do that. So I gave this all to you so that you can see what is going on on your own. You can certainly read that on your own. You don't need me to read it to you. And again, city of West Melbourne, this is on the last page here, page 19. This is just money that is coming to us just for routine maintenance. So these are in their, this is in their five-year, the five-year plan. On the second handout that you have, it's just, it's kind of a reiteration on pages three, four, and five. You'll see the, on the upper, on the upper caption there, that is Ellis Road. It's, they've changed it to St. John's Heritage Parkway slash Ellis Road, so I just want you to know that that is Ellis Road. That is for the widening, that is for the remaining work that has to be done. Now, they have, for the, as you can see right there, $36,834,793. That's going to sit there and hold, and we're hoping to get additional ARPA money, the American Recovery Act money. And Mr. Morgan is fully familiar with this, because it came to the TAC before it got to us, so he absolutely knows what's going on with this program. And then on the next page here, page four, Traffic Management Center. We absolutely need a new Traffic Management Center, and that has been approved already. That is going to be Pineda, where Holy Trinity is out there, the upper grades school that's out there. It's going to be in that area. um, school that's out there, it's going to be in that area right there. And then, on the last page, page five, um, this was the area that I was showing you for 192 at Hollywood. You see it circled there in orange. That whole area there is going to be revamped and it's going to be done a year earlier. So, I thought that would be of interest to the group and that's why I brought it.
Well, thank you. I, I know that the Ellis Road project is number one TPO, but it's still not going to be funded until 25, 26. Is there any way of moving some money around to get that?
With the ARPA money, we're definitely trying to get more of that money for exactly that. That's the whole thing, that is the number one priority right now. And unfortunately, we, uh, fortunately, we have the airport right there that helps with a little bit of pull because that's going to be a main thoroughfare there with the airport.
Anything to add, city manager?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's, 25, 26 is, you really couldn't advance construction because there's so much right-of-way acquisition that has to happen before that. But, sort of, the request would be to see if we can't get the last nine or 10 million from ARPA money to, you know, have the, the construction fully funded. Um, right now, it's roughly half-funded and so we, we think there's an opportunity to perhaps get that project fully funded because as, uh, Chairman Young, TPO indicated and the Mayor Rose indicated, it's the top priority project in all of the central Florida MPOs. So, I think we have a decent argument to, to finish the funding with some of the large amount of monies the state is getting from, from the federal government through ARPA.
What's the total project cost?
Uh, the construction cost is around 20.
And we have how much of that?
We have like nine, three, 49, 894 programmed for construction. There's, there's millions more for right-of-way acquisition that precedes that.
Yeah.
And then, just before I go, I just wanted to mention back to the, to the Bright Line, we're going to be able to go out to, um, and have a tour of the, of Bright Line right along, um, 528. So, if you would like to go on that tour, um, I, probably we should not all call the TPO all at once, so let me know or maybe we should do this through, through the clerks or through, through Cindy, kind of like we did when we went out and watched the launch. We'll go on a, on a, on a bus, um, one of the scout buses will, will pick us up and we'll be able to go out there, we'll get a tour, we'll get to ride on the Bright Line. Um, they told me that when they're out there doing these things out there, they're in boots and jeans, so be prepared. I mean, that's just what I've been told, I don't know how rough it's going to be, but if...
Going around, yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like to go, um, just please, um, let's, Cindy, you're in? Okay. All right, Cindy, I, I don't mean to put something else more on your, on your plate, but I'm sure all of us should not be calling TPO. And I don't know what date, so they'll, they'll, um, once they have an idea of how many of us want to go, they'll get a date. But I know I want to go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniel McDowell?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, beside the regular meetings, standing meetings of the chambers and the, uh, open houses and the Space Coast League of City Dinner last night, um, I also attended the Titusville Sustainability Workshop, uh, and participated or listened in to the webinar yesterday on the, with the Florida, uh, League of Cities for the legislative updates and I'm not sure if anybody else had participated in that, but there were some concerns about a couple of those bills that I, maybe not today, but in the future, near future, we could talk about what that's going to have as far as impact, especially regarding the justification and ordinances of the economic impact. It sounds like that's pretty sophisticated and might even have to take additional resources to satisfy some of that, uh, language. The, uh, and actually, there were several bills that were talked about and I can talk offline with the attorney about that and, uh, talk more intelligent about it because it's still in the process. Wanted to make sure you all saw the invite, uh, for the athletes. Thank you again, that's January 15th, that we're going to be, uh, held here at the community park. A special shout-out to the Police Department and the Parks and Recreation Board for their support and all the other city staff that's been helping out with it. Appreciate it very, very much and if you can please attend, if it, uh, is, um, possible on your schedules, I greatly appreciate you being there and, uh, let's see, what else do I have here? I want to need to follow up, I guess I can address this with the city manager when we asked the questions about the humps and bumps or whatever it is, that follow-up on the, on that road construction that we had as far as the speeding, the, the...
Speed bumps, okay.
Yes, speed bump or whatever that was on the Whitman, I believe. Finally, I wanted to bring up, uh, a question and I know there's concerns about this or that, but the process involved, because August will be here before we know it and, um, the city manager will need, will be leaving us, retiring, and I wanted to make sure that maybe you can address in your update, Mr. Morgan, how that, you just reiterate the process for me and some of the timing so that way I can get a feel for my level of what do I need to do, if anything, at this point. Thank you.
Up next is Councilmember Stephen Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor. First, uh, let me wish everybody happy holidays for Christmas and, uh, on the break that we're going to have and, and I hope you enjoy, uh, your time off and, and spend quality time with your families and everything. So, um, I did have, uh, sat down with Mr. Morgan a little bit, I think at the end of last week and talked to him on a couple of topics. Um, I asked him where we were at with providing the employees with the $1,000, uh, uh, whatever you want to call it, bonus gift, whatever that we, uh, we approved through council and I, uh, wanted to know where we were at with that and asked him to start moving that along a little bit and so we can get, get that money out to our staff in recognition of, uh, what they do and how much we appreciate them. Uh, I also talked to him about, uh, at last meeting, I asked for, uh, the mileage reimbursement policy change to be, um, revisited and he had indicated that nobody had reached out to him. So, uh, for me to put this to bed, I'm just going to, uh, reach out to my constituents, let them know where I stand on the position, uh, through my social media aspect and then, uh, you won't hear from me again on and I'll, you know, if they have any concerns, they can contact you guys and, and let them know that they're concerned with it. So, that's where I'm at with that. Thank you.
You know, we do have a, you did sign a ethic, ethics thing to not attack city council members, so I, I hope that you sign that in good faith.
If you feel attacked after what I put out, you can let me know, Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm not friends with you and, um, or anybody on council, on, on Facebook, but, yeah, I, I heard what you said to one of the council members and it wasn't what people up here should be doing and saying to each other. That's my point.
All, as I said, was I was going to tell them how I felt about it. That's what I said. If you want to let everybody know what I said, feel free.
No, I, I don't want to play that game, but...
That way, I don't know whether, whether you interpreted it correctly or not.
Okay, well, city manager, city attorney, I think you were involved with that. What is your, uh, I, I see you have your heads down, so you don't really want to reply, but, uh, you talked to Mr. Frampton and what was the outcome of that?
Well, my, my understanding is that Councilmember Frampton does not agree with, um, what the council, uh, majority decided. Um, obviously, there were, were votes against, uh, the new policy and, uh, he indicated that if it, as he just said now, that if, uh, that was not up for reconsideration, he was going to let, uh, citizens know and, and so that's certainly within his right. I think, Mayor, you'd indicated that, uh, you know, uh, certainly a hallmark of local government democracy is, is disagreeing on policy matters and that's a good thing, but how we do it becomes equally important. And so, I think we, we, you know, suggest to you that you treat each other with respect that, you know, the citizens elected all of you. And so, while disagreement, uh, is encouraged and helpful and, and if everybody agreed on everything all the time, I think we'd probably go down the wrong path from time to time, but how we disagree matters greatly. And so, that's sort of my encouragement to all that, you know, when there are ones that are that, you know, feel strongly about, uh, to use good self-discipline in, in stating your case, the, um, without attacking one another is, is my advice.
That's good advice and we all should live by that. Councilmember Daniel Bacheladore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to reiterate on the points I made earlier about, uh, worrying U-turns being made by some drivers on Minton and the school bus exit, uh, just to the north of where Wingate meets, uh, Minton. There, there is no slowdown lane for people traveling northbound to do a U-turn at that light to go southbound and, um, it's been mentioned to me by some residents in my, uh, local, um, subdivision, uh, that they've seen some worrying signs of potential traffic accidents there. Um, I have also seen traffic backing up there and it's a cause for concern. I do understand it's a county road, um, and, uh, not something that we necessarily have any control over for limiting a U-turn at that junction, but I think it's something that perhaps could be taken forward to the county and looked at, uh, because I, I am sure that there will sooner or later be an accident, uh, a rear-ending that takes place because of, uh, these U-turns that are taking place there. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember John Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you guys would bear with me here, I just have to discuss something, uh, that I think it's important to the council and I'm not sure if some of you are aware of it, but if you recall, on or about November 28th, we received notice from the police department regards a, to a, uh, a vigil that was being held, uh, for an overdose death or later was, um, investigated as a suspicious death, uh, at one of our hotels out here on, uh, West New Haven. I'd made some inquiries at that time, the city manager and the chief of police about the amount of calls there, what had been taking place. And at that time, I had learned that we'd had 20-some calls for overdose and five deaths at that location. Um, this morning, I received a call from the chief and got an update on that and, and the chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong on some of these, but, uh, received information that we've had 71 calls, uh, this year at that particular hotel, uh, 71. 29 calls for overdose and seven of those 29, seven people have died at this one location inside the city. Um, I, I think that's, um, shocking and all the years that I've, um, worked in law enforcement and I've, we've closed, I was responsible or part of closing several businesses that were declared nuisances, I'd never seen any location that had multiple deaths like this. And if, you know, we, we really get involved in doing a lot of other different things, but somehow or another, we dropped the ball and I don't know if it was, and I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but I think somewhere collectively as a city, we've, we've not done our job. Somewhere along the, the way, we should have been on top of this and, and the person that owns that location, that establishment, should have been on top of this. They should have realized that death number three, hey, I've got a problem here. This year, now, we're not talking over the last five years, we're talking the last 11 months and I don't know where we're even at in the last couple of weeks. But that gent who runs that place over there should have been on top of that and he should have been reaching out to someone to figure out what he needed to do. But, we spent a lot of time getting involved in all the different organizations and agencies and going to the meetings and all these things, but we have a house on fire here right now and this is a fire that we need to put out. And we need the city, we need to get it behind our, our people and give them some direction and if, if we don't, it's going to continue to get worse. My experience working with these type of establishments where they have a lot of narcotics trafficking going on and, uh, narcotics, the users usually follow these people, these locations, that this situation is, be a temporary Band-Aid, we're going to be dealing with this as long as the traffickers have that haven to go to these locations, the, the drug users are going to follow them there and we're going to continue to have more overdose. So, I, I'm going to make a recommendation at this point, uh, and to the, to the, um, ask the police department if they could follow up and, uh, and conduct, you know, these interviews with some of the, uh, future overdose victims that they have and, and just in the immediate area to determine the origin and establish if there's connections to the, that particular, uh, motel that we're having the issues with. And also want to ask, as you all agree with me on this and, and, and make a recommendation or authorize the city attorney to take any necessary action, including an emergency order to close this location if the hotel management cannot mitigate this nuisance. And that, and that is the only way that we're going to be able to get this done. Now, they've told me that this, this gent's told him that he's working to do what he can, that all of a sudden, he wants to, to do the right thing here, but somewhere along the line that this should have been done months ago. And I'm not saying that maybe somebody wouldn't have died, but they may not have died here. And I would question, and I don't know if the chief can answer, how many of these, these victims that we have live in the city of West Melbourne? Are they coming here? Because I know the last person that, that we know that passed away did not live in the city, they lived in Palm Bay. So, how many of these people are actually coming here? So, do we, do we want, we're a bedroom community, do we want to be known for this type of activity? And I, and I, I cannot impress upon you, all of you, that seven deaths is outrageous. If any business in this community had seven deaths at their doorstep, any restaurant, any, any place, gas station, anywhere, seven deaths, would we, would we just like, that's okay? This isn't, this isn't Cleveland or Detroit or Los Angeles or Philadelphia, this is West Melbourne, Florida. We're a small community and this is, we have to take some action. So, I would ask, so, if, I, I would ask that we give the, the city attorney that opportunity to, to take that action, whatever, uh, civil action he needs to take, because we're not going to meet again, I think, till what, uh, mid-January, mid-January? And if, and if they have, continue to have more deaths or more incidences of these overdoses, that this, that he take the action to declare this place a public nuisance and move forward. So, Mr. Richardson, what would you need from us to, to do that?
Just that, authorization to file suit when and if appropriate to abate a public nuisance.
I'm in favor.
Do, I got a couple of questions. When we got the call not too long ago, there was five deaths and now there's seven. Did we get two more in this last couple of weeks that I missed?
I don't think so. I think it was just a calculation of the numbers. I don't, I don't...
Those are not big, I mean, they're big numbers, but they're not that hard to calculate.
I, I think part of our problem is, and I, and I, I'm only guessing here, but I don't, for maybe our records management system's not capturing the information when someone dies because of an overdose. It's different like, oh, it's a murder or if it's a robbery. I, I don't know if we can change those parameters so they can catch this so we can start tracking it more easy?
I thought we had all that sophisticated equipment to know where all our crimes are happening and if these are drug crimes, why hadn't there been something done or?
I, I don't, I don't have the answer. I mean, I don't know.
What are we doing now, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I think Chief Wiley can probably address the, the data collection and, and what's a, what's a crime and what's not considered a crime.
What are we doing about it? I guess is the question. I mean, we, thank you, Mr. Dittmore, for bringing this forward, but this seems excessive like he's saying, so.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council. Uh, in one word, the problem we're having is, um, fentanyl. Uh, fentanyl is a synthetic drug that is introduced into other narcotics and it gets a better high and people are dying left and right. Uh, it's escalated tremendously in the last two years and it's not just in our city, it's across the country. And drug users are dying at a, at accelerated rate. And we are addressing this particular property by increasing our narcotics investigations. SIU's been up there numerous times and I think the original five deaths that you received, that wasn't accurate because when, wherever they got that information from, I understand it was from the police department, uh, when I did an analysis and looked at it, it was actually seven and it's not that complicated. When we have a death, everything's ca, everything's in our records management system, but you have to look at it critically because it may come in, for example, as a drug overdose and then later be a death. So, the initial call then has to get changed to, so that we, we look at it. So, um, every death investigation is, uh, we have a, um, a, a report that's, that's generated, so it's very simple to look at that. Um, but when you, when you do... But when you do an analysis based off of our CAD system, which is our dispatch, you may get a different number if you don't go and dig a little bit deeper through LARMs. It's another part of our system. So it's not a complicated thing for us to do. Depends on, you know, the questions that are being asked. Overdoses versus overdose deaths are two different things, so I think the numbers are pretty clear that this is a problematic area, this particular hotel. And I've had this situation in my entire career. Hotels like this across the country are problematic. You have them in every city. They have them on beachside. Same, identical thing we're having here, they're having there. But I think the problem that we're experiencing in America is fentanyl. And you've seen a major increase of people that are drug users that are dying rapidly. And it's increasing a ridiculous amount of people dying all over the country.
Chief, I'm going to interrupt you, but is it Fairfield End that's just a stone's throw away from there?
Correct.
How many deaths have they had over there?
I didn't look at that particular location, but I would tell you that it's not even close to this if they had any.
Okay, so my question is, it's, the drug problem's a drug problem, but it seems to be focused on this particular location, even though there's, so that tells me that it's a management issue, that they're not managing that property correctly to discourage that type of activity and not taking enough action to dissuade those folks from coming there. So if we have responsible businesses all around there that don't have this issue, they have this issue, correct?
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yep.
The clientele that frequents this establishment are a lot of drug users, and I guess, you know, when they go in for a room, they can do it for a week at a time, three days at a time, or whatever, or they can do it for a month, right? So they pay the fee, and they live there because there's no, they don't live in a regular residence. They don't have a house, they don't have an apartment. So that's part of the issue. They're transient.
How many of those are repeat offenders? In other words, we give them the Narcon and they go back, or is that a bad policy to, they choose to use drugs to give them Narcon and?
Well, I don't think so. I think we're trying to save human lives, and for me, it's, if we give somebody Narcan fifteen times, let's just say, and they get off of drugs and they become a productive citizen, we've accomplished something, we saved a human life, and that's what we do as a police department. We constantly save lives. We started this program of administering Narcan because I was talking to a friend of mine who was a chief in Pennsylvania. He introduced it to his organization, and within one week, he saved eleven people. And that's when I made a decision that I would go forward with that, and that was, I don't know, Mr. Morgan, I think that was like seventy, eighty years ago that we introduced it, maybe not that long.
It was since I've been here, so less than six, it was about four or five.
Okay, thank you, Morris. My recollection's not so good anymore, Mayor. Getting up during years. But it's a good thing. You know, we've saved lives, and hopefully, people get back on track. So that's what we do. And unfortunately, I agree with you, and the people I call repeat offenders, that we bring back utilizing Narcan, it's a risky situation, and sometimes they lose their lives because we don't get there in time, or they ingest too much. And by the way, it's, you know, when you are mixing these drugs in someone's basement or, you know, clandestine situations, it's not a perfect science, right? They're not, they don't know what they're doing. They're not scientists. They're, these are people just trying to make a profit, and it's really unfortunate that this synthetic drug has become so popular and so profitable. You know, before marijuana was very profitable a few years back, and then cocaine and crack cocaine, and now it's the fentanyl.
So it's pretty obvious that we're not going to stop it, but how do we deal with it, I guess is the question, right?
Excellent, excellent question. I think through proper investigations, like, I'll give you a good example, Mayor. We have done multiple investigations where we've taken fentanyl off the street. We had a couple kilos that were, that was sent through the mail, and our SIU unit intercepted that. That's major, because we could have saved many, many lives just based off of that one investigation. And, you know, I'm a proponent of making sure that we conduct quality investigations, but I agree with Councilmember Dittmore. This is a problematic location, and I've had this my entire career. I've been in this business since I was twenty years old, and I'm not going to tell you that's forty years, but it's above forty years now. And I remember this when I was a rookie cop, where we've had issues with these type of hotels. And every jurisdiction has them. And even these extended stays, we're finding out that we're getting the same type of situations happen in those areas. We have a few of those that have been introduced in our city, and I've noticed that we also have fentanyl deaths there, narcotics issues.
But you're also getting them at the Cumberland Farms and different housing and upper and lower class, so it's just kind of hitting everybody. I know this is the hotspot, but?
Yeah, you know, and we look at that too, Mayor, because when you have locations that you are repeatedly going back to, and they become, we do call them hotspots, and we do emphasize the fact that we're spending a lot of our resources there. I've been concerned about that location for a while. It's not just, this isn't just come up today. In years now that we've been dealing with that situation.
So, Chief, it sounds like you're in favor of what Mr. Dittmore's suggesting as far as an administrative action?
Yes and no, and I'll tell you why. Because the practicality of getting it done is maybe very difficult. It's very difficult. I'm not saying it's impossible, but to shut down a business based off of that type of activity, I'm not saying it's impossible, but I've seen it many, many times that we have done as a nuisance property, and we try to do that legally in court, and it's very, very difficult, if not impossible, most times.
Definitely makes a point, though, right?
It does, and I'm not saying we shouldn't attempt it.
And I've done it several times. I don't bring a bad case because you don't want to lose one of these cases. And the police department discussed this with me approximately three weeks ago. They were compiling information for me, statistics and reports that I would need if we're going to file, and I advised in the meantime that the best practice would be to proactively reach out to the property management and start working with them and let them know this is coming, that this is a solution that is being considered, which would be requesting injunctive relief up to and including shutting the business down or placing other mandatory, you know, requirements on the business to get it under control. So the police department has done that. Lieutenant Romano has been working with the property owner. The property owner is placing two flock cameras on the property. Property owner is giving police department unrestricted access to guest information, so police department, when there is an overdose, they can cross-reference with known drug dealers and people with arrest warrants and things like that and do a lot more proactive policing. So we give them that opportunity. We let them know, give them sort of, it's not really due process, but let's say fair warning, see what they do to curb and abate the problem, and if they don't do it, then the next step would be to go to court. And if you authorize me to file that action, it just means I don't have to bring it back to you at a specific council meeting in the future to do it. But I want to be the one to exercise the judgment of when it needs to be done, because I can tell you, we are not there right now.
Have you gotten that direction yet? I mean, did enough people say yes?
No, it can't be by consensus. It would have to be specific authorization by motion passed by majority of council to file suit to abate nuisance.
Based on that, I'll make that motion.
Would this have to be an agenda item? We haven't, yeah, we haven't noticed this.
I mean, you would have to do your procedure to add it as an additional item. It's not a public hearing or anything like that. There's nothing anyone could, you know, input anyone could do, but if you want to make it, we can make it an agenda item on your January agenda. I don't intend to file anything between now and mid-January, but.
So let me ask you something.
Not because of that, just because it wouldn't be, the suit wouldn't be ripe at this point.
Let me just pipe in here for a second. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you very much for keeping it open. If it's the sixteenth time you give it to them, and that's the time they change their mind, then that's what it takes. So thank you for always keeping that door open. But when we had an issue with another business that, on the other side of the street, back 2010, 2011, 2012, back then, there was an ongoing problem establishment, which is a furniture company now, up on 190, up on New Haven, and it was an issue as well. It didn't result in seven deaths in a year, but it was quite an issue, it was a problem here in the city, and we were trying to do something about it then, but we couldn't do anything even close to.
Yeah, what was going on at levels was not good, but it would not have risen to the requirements under law to abate a public nuisance.
So this, all right, so that because this is as severe as it is, this is something that we can actually do something about? Well, I'm glad that there is some stopping point somewhere, so thank you very much.
Mr. Bachelorette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my preference would be to get the data, put the data in context, and then be provided options by council based on that data at an upcoming council meeting, so that we are making smart decisions based on data in context, particularly in light of national epidemics, not the COVID one, the other. So that we are making sure that this business is an outlier, because if the business is not an outlier, we would expose ourselves to risk were we to take any action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo what Council, or Deputy Mayor Young said, and that is great. I do think it's systemic. It's not isolated to here. We might be just pushing it off to a different location. I understand that. I think in good faith, it sounds like things are moving. I do want to say also that this is the same facility that is housing a lot of homeless individuals as well. So I do think that it's, and it's not any big secret, this is the hotel that a lot of homeless people come to here in this area. So just kind of keep that in mind. If you just kind of push things off, let's get to the systemic issues. But it sounds like in good faith, we're moving in that direction. I would support, though, Councilmember Dittmore's motion, or soon-to-be motion.
Yeah. The only question I have is, over the holiday, we have two, three, four more. What do we do? We got to wait till the next meeting?
All a special meeting.
I mean, is that going to be our only option?
Can I chime in for a minute, Morris? I think Councilmember Bachelorette hit the nail on the head. We are conducting an in-depth analysis across the city to make sure that everything that we're telling you is extremely accurate. More importantly, it's not just across our city, but I think looking at the county as a whole is also important. So, because we want to get the, you know, you've got the small picture, we want to get the big picture also, so we have a snapshot of what's really going on. But I will tell you that you're on track for sure, Councilmember Dittmore, that you have identified a place that is definitely problematic, that we have to work on. And I've been, one of the things I put out initially with my SIU unit, that they will work on this location because of the same problems that we've been experiencing. And we have made arrests, and we had done investigations. We had, we have flipped people and taken things federal just out of that hotel alone. So it's a little more involved than, you know, than, I guess, just trying to close it down. I think trying to get all the correct information so that our city attorney can bring that forward to the court to, you know, close it down, or whatever we want to do with it.
Understand. Could you tell me, do you have a clue, or do we know how many deaths we've had, overdose deaths we've had in the city of West Melbourne in 2021?
Well, I'm doing an analysis right now, analysis right now. I don't want to just give you a figure off the top of my head, because this is something that we were looking at for this hotel alone, but we've had them across the city, and.
Does this hotel represent a lion's share of our deaths?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We have over, I'm sure we have over fourteen deaths right in the city. I mean, a lot.
Yeah, so, you know, and again, if I say one thing, I don't want to come back and tell you another, so let me conduct the analysis, which is ongoing at this moment. And honestly, we've been concentrating on this hotel for the last year or so by doing sting operations, and it's not only just narcotics, but prostitution, it's other things that are also we're looking at. So it's.
Will that be ready by the next meeting, if they have it on the agenda?
Absolutely, yeah. I think we can get this together pretty quickly and make it a priority.
And that's what I meant by nothing would be filed regardless before the next meeting in January, because everything that's going to be compiled for the agenda is the same stuff I've requested that would be necessary to support a lawsuit. Like I said, I'm not going to, I'm not going to file one to lose, so we need to build that case. You know, no doubt, it will show that this is an outlier and unusual location, but you do have to build that case.
Okay, so right now, we've been working on it about three weeks. But we'll be seeing some of the numbers you'll be sending over to us here, probably?
If you give me twenty-four hours now, I'm just joking. If you give me a few days, I'll get this together pretty quickly for you, and I'll give it to Mr. Morgan and Morris, and then Mr. Morgan will direct me to give it to council, and I'm sure, and it's, there's no secret here. It's public information, and I'll get it together and organize it so we can look at it in an intelligent manner and make a decision about, you know, where the problems are. I mean, we, listen, we do it all the time with other crimes too, right? Car breaks are the big one. We're always looking at those. So there's hotspots all over our city with different crimes. This is definitely a hotspot.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
And I want to thank Councilmember Dittmore too for discussing this matter publicly and bringing it to light for the rest of council. But more importantly, it's not like we haven't put a lot of effort into this hotel and trying to work with them. The owner is very cooperative. He has been, and I will say that. So that's one of the good things through our investigations, it's been very helpful. They do have camera systems. We want to make improvements there.
Let me just ask you one question. In the last year, during all this time that's taken place, how many times has he reached out to the police department about all the deaths that he was having that he knew about?
Well, I think, you know.
I'm just, I'm just making a point.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Exactly right.
I mean, it's, he's cooperating, I think, because.
Because he has to.
Because he has to, and his back's against the wall, and it's not really because he's trying to be, in my opinion, he's trying to be a good guy. He's known about this all along, and I think, and I think he failed, he failed. He failed miserably because of, by letting this go. I mean, if he's an onsite person there, I think he could have done, he could have done a lot better job. But anyways, that's just my take on it, so. But no, thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Bentley.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just comment to our city attorney that I would support any action to, that you deem is the right course of action. Every time I see something going on, an overdose, or something, whether they die or not, it's generally at the same place, more often than not. And so, you know, I would, I would be in support of taking some kind of action to do something to change the outcome that we've been dealing with for the last couple of years. And then, on with my report. I was next, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I thought that's what you meant. I did attend the Space Coast League of Cities meeting last night, along with several other folks up here on the dais, and there was a gentleman, I think he's from Sebastian Enlet. I'm not sure of his name, or if that's actually where he's from, but he was saying how he had to give money back again this year because people aren't putting in projects that, and I've heard before that, well, we can't participate because we don't have, I don't know, land along the lagoon or whatever. But this guy's begging to give this money away. He's willing to be creative and to work with cities to find out how they could make this work and to help them write the project. And if you ask, he gives you the money, he says. I mean, there was millions of dollars or whatever it was that he didn't give away last year. How much? Yeah, half a million dollars that he literally didn't fund because cities aren't asking for it. And, you know, I would ask that West Melbourne doubles down and talks to the guy or other people and say, is there some way that we could qualify? And so I would just ask that we go back and do that again, because it just seems like a waste that we can't think of something to make use of that. And he seems to think. And he seems to think there is ways. Well, make him, make him say, tell us what it is. I don't know what it is, but hopefully we could get a couple of people to sit in a room and say, here's a project that West Melbourne could do that maybe is landlocked that would qualify. So enough on that. Okay, also, I would remind the city council that we have on Friday, the luncheon for the city and for its employees. And if you could, if you're on the council and you can attend, I would ask that you attend. I think that should be a good event for everybody that works within the city. I would also mention that Randy Fine has an upcoming Christmas thing on Thursday. If you want to go to that, it's open to the public and to the council. So it's an opportunity to meet your local representative and have any conversations that you might choose to with them and celebrate there with the crowd of folks that may be there. I did attend also the Palm Bay Chamber here this last month. And, you know, that organization's doing well. And it's, I think, really beneficial for our city to have a few people that attend that, both the Melbourne and Palm Bay Chamber meetings. And I think that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And that cleanup here, I attended a lot of the same meetings, Palm Bay Chamber Commerce, Civilian Military, and Space Coast League of City, where Ms. Young does a great job in running that. One of the topics that we talked about is the legislators, as they're meeting in their committees, there's a lot of things coming out. And two of the hot ones we talked about yesterday at that meeting was, one of them, right now, when anybody files to run, we fill out Form 1, whether you're on a committee, planning and zoning, and those kind of things. Well, there's proposal out there to, I think it's called Form 5, is it? Form 6, only missed it by one. And the one we fill out, you couldn't tell if you're a millionaire or you're on food stamps. So the one that they have, they want us, they're talking about changing, is the same one, the higher level offices. It has so many things, you almost have to hire an accountant to do it. And like Ms. Young says, if you make one mistake on it, you get an ethics violation, they come knock on your door, and you get fined. And there's no statute of limitation on that. So even if you don't mean to, I mean, you got to do everything. And I'm not worried about me. I mean, I feel like I live in a fishbowl or a glass house anyway. But my concern is, all these committees we have, planning and zoning, and they're going to have to disclose. City managers, I believe, has to do it. I don't know about the attorney, they have to do it. Assistant city managers. But all these committees we have, they're going to have to fill, if this passes, they'll have to fill out the form and have all their assets listed. And, you know, we'll see how many millions of dollars they're worth. I mean, it has all that stuff. So I don't know that that's a good, especially at the lower level. Just one of those things. The other hot discussion Ms. Young had yesterday was the partisan elections. They're proposing, and just in Beavard County, from Representative Fine. And we pulled the discussion because there's still some more legal stuff going on that every one of us, including Soil and Water and School Board, would have to be, they call it a nonpartisan race, but you have to put a D or R independent on there. So we're seeing how legal that kind of thing is. So again, that's, that's one of the things, they're looking at Tallahassee. And there's a big one, some of y'all alluded to it, the ordinance one that, I mean, you change an ordinance and you got to hire an economist to see how that affects not only Beavard County, but maybe how, what we do would affect the whole state. So again, shutting a lot of things down. Moving on, the tree lighting ceremony, I want to talk about that a little bit. Central Middle School did an excellent job. They had their band and orchestra and strings out there. And they did a nice job of playing there. And it's nice that all those junior high kids don't drive, so all their parents were there, so we had a big crowd. I would just ask that next year, we, the tree that we have is, it's seen better days. I mean, it really has. It's worn, it's worn out. I mean, it needs to be upgraded some. And there was some talk, and I concur with this, we didn't have sand out there, we didn't have hot chocolate, we didn't pass out cookies. It was just, light the tree and have a nice day. I think we could have represented the city a little better with that. And you can blame COVID or not blame COVID, but, you know, here Friday, we're having Santa Claus at our thing. So you can't blame COVID for closeness and things. So again, I think the city could do a little better. But I passed by there this morning, and I see that they put a new display out there, a Hanukkah display out there. So I guess they're trying to do a little better job with the lights and things. This weekend, all the mayors got together in the county. We have 16 mayors, I think we had two-thirds of them there. We just get together informally and talk about whatever. The big talk was, what are we all spending our money that we get from the government? And I said, of course, a lot of water projects and reclaimed and tearing up Hollywood Boulevard. No, I didn't know all that. But some of the, one of the places has had their buying body cams with it. Now, again, most places were hiring consultants to see what they can legally do. So I thought it was kind of interesting. Talking about reviving, like 192, for instance, it was nice to see that we got that new building of the four-wheel shop that, what's it, next to Taco Bell that was closed, I forget the name of...
Pier 1.
Pier 1, it's a big organization. They do a lot of four-wheeling stuff, and they filled that up. So it's nice that we don't have that empty building, just like Office Depot. As you all know, Aldi's is going out there. I saw that advertised in the Friday memo. Also, the Chinese restaurant that used to be on 192 that they knocked down, that's, I think that's a dental place. So it's nice to see empty places and reviving all those. And I was going to ask Mr. Morgan, the 7-Eleven that we have on the corner up here that's been closed for a good while, and next door, we have Buddy's Rentals that moved out across the street. So I assume somebody's going to take both those parcels. Do we know what's going in there yet?
I don't.
Okay, but something is?
I don't know.
Okay, because I see the flags where they surveyed it. So I'm just assuming they're doing it. But it's good to see businesses coming in. I saw in the newspaper, 192 from Wickham all the way to the other end of town is one of the worst places in the whole county far as accidents. And I don't know what we're doing about that. I mean, is there anything that we can do? Or just put it, just let it, clean it up? Is it...
Yeah, I think that's an emphasis area for our police department. Obviously, we, when we sort of get closer to full staffing, we want to revitalize the motor units. We think they're particularly effective in those kinds of, you know, riding traffic citations in high-traffic areas. So part of the goal is to get, you know, filled up and try to get our motor units back in place.
Do we not have a motor unit out there?
Chief, where are we with our motors right at the moment?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, but...
We have one motor officer right now, Mayor. We had an officer that resigned, so we had two at one time. And I think what we're looking at is our traffic unit, which is four officers. And we do, what is done as a step program, where they go to the problematic areas, the hot zones, where we're having the majority of auto accidents. And you're exactly right, that was one of them. And we were moving them around throughout the day to do traffic enforcement during the critical times when we identified the areas when people were getting involved in accidents. So, and that's a quick analysis we do through our system that we can look at and identify those timelines.
We don't have enough information on that, where the bad accidents are yet?
We, Mayor, we know where all they are, and you do too. And that's where we've been putting our officers. So right now, and Mr. Morgan's right, we're a little low on manpower. We're trying to get people on the street and trained. But our traffic unit is now doing a mid-shift to help out with the squads.
I did hear you on the radio or saw your thing when you were Sheriff Ivy up in Cape Canaveral area or someplace, and they interviewed you, and they said you did anything in West Melbourne, and you said, send me officers, send me officers, we need more help. So where are we with staffing?
And it worked, Mayor. Right now, we have one opening. Everything else is conditionals, or they're in the process of going through the academy or in training. So we have literally one vacancy, I'm going to call it, where we don't have a conditional, we don't, they're not in the academy, or they're not in the F-TAP program.
But you have a lot that aren't really on the force yet, they're in training?
Yeah, so that's a good way to put it. We have the people that are in transition until they get fully trained and put out on the road.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What else I have is... I had a request that we have the COVID testing that's kind of dominating the park there, the big covered area where kids normally used to play and stuff. How long are we going to let them monopolize that? And as opposed to maybe, maybe moving them to a different place of the park there, where we can get more use out of it?
Well, they're, they're under the covered area in the Field of Dreams portion, which seems to serve it for, you know, inclement weather and so forth. It's, it's good. We've told them they should park in the north parking lot, which is the least-used parking lot. So I think it actually functions as a, as a good location for that. I can't tell you how long they're planning on staying. I thought, when the testing numbers got so small a couple of months ago, that they might, you know, pull up stakes and move out. But I suspect that they might be there for a little bit longer. I don't know. I can check with the county emergency management to see what they're...
I think it's a great place for them, but it's not a great place for our taxpayers. A lot of parents don't want to bring their kids there because they're walking right by that. So we do have a couple of big pavilions on the north side of there. And we also have the empty Pal House that's empty, or semi-empty. So I don't know how long they're going to be there. I don't know if they know how long they're going to be there, so. You know, I just hate to close everything down just because they're dominating that and, you know, it's costing us resources. Also, I saw that we're having the Mayor's Fitness Challenge again, and that registration is open. And so everybody that wants to sign up for that, the only requirement is, you have to input your minutes every week. And I'm not sure when, I haven't got a memo when that starts. I think it starts like February 1st or 29th of January. I was close, okay. But you can start walking today and exercising. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy Holidays. And the next meeting we have is the middle of January, January 18th. So everybody deserves a good break. And Mr. Morgan, what do you have for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide, under the manager's report, some really good news today that we've been wanting to hear for a very long time. Today, Deputy City Manager Tom Bradford and I traveled to Palatka and attended the board meeting of the St. John's River Water Management District. And we were very fortunate, the board approved our consumptive use permit. So we have a raw water supply to move forward with our water plant. So a very important milestone day. And so thank Tom Bradford for his work in helping us secure that permit. And we were very glad to have reached that milestone. So my intention is to give Melbourne the notice tomorrow that we are intending not to go past the December 31st, 2026, part of our agreement that has an automatic renewal for 15 more years, but we have an opt-out period, and so we're going to exercise that.
I'll be happy to hand-deliver that if you...
Okay.
Some coal on the stocking.
I just want to add one thing. I noticed in the front by our main sign out there that they have started the beautification. And I really like the trees that are shaped like Christmas trees. We can decorate those, those are a real nice addition to that. So I saw Mr. Bradford out there just eyeing the beautiful dirt, nice black rich soil, so.
Yeah, we know that's been a project of interest to the council for a while. And I think that's a good example of a project that the council kept encouraging us to do better and better. I know former Councilmember Smith was really interested in the wall, and the council supported that, and then the landscaping, and of course, the irrigation and the lighting. And so I think when we're all said and done, it'll be a project in a very visible corner that we're all proud of. So I give credit to the council for pushing staff to make that project more and more and more as it evolved. And I think, took a long time, but I think we're going to be real proud of how it turned out. But I give credit to the council for wanting that to be a quality project.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Richardson? Anything for us?
Yeah, and let me answer the question that Councilmember McDowell asked. I apologize for not getting back to that. I had it in my notes, but I glossed over it in my zeal to talk about the consumptive use permit. And that's the city manager selection process. As you know, I'm retiring August 31st. And the game plan is to really start that six-month selection progress in earnest in February. So in January, I'll be giving you an outline of what I think would be a good process for you to consider as you consider your next election. And so, you know, we're not too far away from getting underway with that. So I know several of you have talked one-on-one to our two assistant city managers, and that's good, certainly would continue to encourage that. But we'll set up a suggested formal process for you to consider that would start in February.
And piggybacking on that, what is your plans for the new chief of police? Because his is leaving in September. So what, what are you looking at for that? I know you said we have to go outside to hire.
Well, I think what you, that should be a decision of your next city manager. Obviously, we have a change in the charter that makes that a city manager selection, but a confirmation by the council. And so where in the past I have selected under, you know, before here, chief of police, along with the other department heads, had a very involved citizen process, sort of a multi-step process, as it were, kind of like we did when we adopted the master plan for West Melbourne Community Park that turned out so well. You know, a multi-step process for that, that includes the community and the council and different communities of interest so that they all have an opportunity to have an input on that selection, even though under the charter, it's the manager's selection with a council confirmation vote. That's not one that any manager would want not to incorporate citizen and council input into that selection. So it's, it's also a very important selection. And although that won't be mine, because I won't be the city manager when that happens, it's, I think the mayor's correct in that starting thinking about that process becomes important for your next manager.
I just want to also say that right now, we have a lot of institutional knowledge leaving this county. I know in Cocoa Beach, I met the new Cocoa Beach city manager, and she'll start in February, because the current one is retiring in February. Indian Harbour Beach, Mark Ryan is retiring in June, moving to Tallahassee, sold his house already. And of course, you're going in August, but kind of staying semi-local, so.
Yeah, my plan is to be a snowbird.
You might have to go to Canada, the way the weather's been lately. All right, well, it's been a good meeting, it's a good year. Wish everybody a Happy New Year, and thank you all for hanging in. Meeting is adjourned, 10:18.